Good evening, everybody. This is Jim Brown, Chairman of the Board of Finance, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Finance. It is Tuesday, November 17th. We will call this meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, good evening. For the public, just some information. You may send your comments before or after the meeting to the following email, as we cannot take live public comments. They can send your comments over to BOF@FairfieldCT.org. Okay, just another note. Sheila Tessie can no longer take our minutes. Her plate became full, so she has stepped out of that role. So tonight, Jennifer Carpenter is going to take our minutes. So, tonight, just please take a quick look at our agenda. We're going to hear an update on the fill pile, and then we will vote on a bond resolution in regards to the fill pile. We'll hear an update on our COVID-19 expenses for the town. We will hear the Board of Ed's next week at our quarterly meeting. We will hear an update on our purchasing policy, and then we will approve some minutes. So, any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will go to item number three to hear an update on the fill pile. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Ms. Marmian. Okay, we will now hear an update. Mr. Bremer, I will turn it over to you. You are on mute.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, so, Tom, we're going to hear an update, and then that will roll right on into the bond resolution. But if you can give us an update on the fill pile, I believe the last time we looked at numbers, and it was from Mr. Carey's spreadsheet on April 23rd. I don't believe we've had an update, like a formal update since then. We have discussed it, but this is the first time it's been on our agenda as an item, I believe, since at least April...
Yeah, I think it's April 29th, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Bremer.
I think you're correct. So I'm going to give you an overview from 5,000 feet so you get a sense of where we are today, what is this bond resolution all about, and how does it fit into the overall scheme? I thought by giving you an overview, by putting everything in context, that would help you obviously make some decisions. So what's happened since April? Well, the town received a number of NOVs. What's an NOV? It's a notice of violation. The town received a number, and what we basically started doing was we wanted to make sure that before we moved ahead with any remediation or any fixes, if you will, that we wanted to get the state DEEP sign off on any fixes that we did. And so for a month or two, we negotiated back and forth with the state. Because the position the administration took was, we know the history of the berm. The berm was built around the fill pile, and it didn't have deep approval before it was built. And that has caused us a number of problems moving forward. So the administration took the position that we don't want to do anything unless the state signs off on it beforehand. Make a long story very short. The negotiations bogged down over a few months, and we really couldn't get anywhere to the satisfaction of the administration. So we decided that the only route that we could go to basically fix the situation from the town's standpoint is to enter into a consent order with DEEP, which we just recently signed and finished. And basically, what that is, is an agreement between the town and the state to clean everything up, to fix everything. And the good news from a consent order sense is we're in a position vis a vis the state that as we fix things up and get our LEP to sign off on those fixes, the state is really constrained and really can't come back against the town at some future date to say we didn't do what we said we would do and all that kind of stuff. So basically, we're protected by the consent order in that sense. So now, where are we? Well, I sent out a number of documents, but to me, the most important document is the very first document. It gives you the overview in terms of costs moving forward. And I know in everybody's mind, whenever we start talking fill pile, the first question is, what's this going to cost? What's this going to cost? And I think the best way to look at that, at least from my experience over the last few months in dealing with numerous meetings on the fill pile, is the best way to look at that is, first of all, we have to do a significant testing on all the sites to determine how big a problem we have. When that is all completed and the data is analyzed, we then have to sit down and we have to put together what's called remediation plans. And once those remediation plans are written up, and they usually take a few months to complete, once the remediation plans are written up, we can then move forward and say, okay, now we have a plan to remediate. Now we have a sense of what we need to do, and now we have a sense of what it's going to cost. And I think if you look at the first page, we're at the stage with these first, the first seven sites, where the analysis has been completed, the remediation plan is ready, and in fact, we need to move forward now to remediate. And in fact, we have started on two of those sites right now. Sunset Avenue and Old Dam Road, I believe, is what we've already started on. And the plan frankly is to go, at one point, we were thinking we're going to tackle all these sites at the same time, but that's too costly that way. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to go site after site. We're going to finish one site. When that's all done, we move to the second site. And that's, it's the most cost-effective way to approach it. So if we just talk about the first seven sites, we're ready to remediate those sites, and as I said, we've already started. Frankly, we don't have enough money to complete those sites. We're basically almost out of all the money that's been allotted to this through all the operating, through your previous transfers from the operating budget. I believe it was approximately 2.2 million. We burned through that money in terms of, for a whole host of reasons, legal fees, analysis, different testing, and if you want to, I can certainly go through those expenses if you wish. But where we are now is we're, we need to move forward with these seven sites. So I want to break down, and of course, if there's any questions, you can ask at any time. I'll just keep going if I don't hear any questions. All right, so, go ahead, Jim. You have a question?
Mr. Walsh?
I'm sorry, I don't...
Mr. Walsh, you have a question? Jim, you're on mute.
I guess I have a number of questions, but the question I have overall is should we just, should we just wait for your presentation to be over? And then just ask all... Maybe, maybe that makes more sense.
Okay.
I just don't want to wait right to be able to ask the questions.
All right, well, let me, let me, I'll go on. So, so the seven sites, to me, these are kind of minor sites. They're not the major sites that we're, we need to focus on, which is in eight, nine, 10, and 11. So these are kind of minor sites, but these are all defined, and you know, I say minor, I recognize that they're hundreds of thousands of dollars. But relatively speaking, they're what I call the minor sites. Now we have the major sites coming up, eight, nine, 10, and 11. Let us focus on eight, nine, and 11 first. Eight, nine, and 11, we still, where we are in eight is the landfill, the fill pile itself. We have done a complete data analysis of the fill pile. We have done, we have spent an enormous amount of money on testing that site. What I have learned is typically is you do a bunch of data, you send it off to the state, you say, this is what we think, and this is how far we've gotten. And the state comes back and says, oh, these are all great. Thank you very much. But we want you to focus on A, B, and C, or this little bit, or that little bit. They want you to do a little bit more testing. That's typically what happens on these large sites. So what we, so that landfill supplemental investigation is believed to be the last amount of testing that we need to do on the fill pile itself. How long will that take? If we were to begin tomorrow, it's going to take three to four months. All right, so let's assume we do that. What's the next, what happens then? Well, what happens then is what I said earlier. Then we sit down when we have all the data analysis and we do what's called the remediation plan. That typically takes a few months to write up, and then we'll have a very good sense of cost, et cetera, et cetera. Because what I've also learned is there's lots of ways that we can remediate different sites, depending upon what we find. And, but once we have a remediation plan, we have a pretty good, a very good idea about what the costs are, what the timeframe is, what are we going to have to do moving forward? And what I mean by that is what I'm realizing is some of these remediation sites may require what's called groundwater monitoring, which may extend for many years into the future, like an annual expense, 25, $50,000 per site kind of thing. So, but it's too early now to say how many sites that's going to be. We have no idea. But it's going to be, if any, it's going to be the major sites. It's not going to be any of these seven sites that we talked about previously. And I should also add about the seven sites. When we say this is what it's going to cost, what we're really also saying is we're never going back to those seven sites. When we're done, we're done. The state will sign off, and we don't have to go back there. Okay, I just didn't, I didn't want to forget that. So now, the eight, we talked about the landfill. So we're about ready to do the last data analysis, and that's going to cost around $200,000. We also need to do more data analysis on the penfield. Penfield is two sections of Penfield. One, it's the parking lot. Number two, it's underneath the building. There are different levels of remediation that we may or may not have to do. But again, that's very dependent upon what this last data analysis will show us. So again, how long will that take? If we were to begin next month, I expect it's going to take another two or three months, if that, maybe a little shorter. So we're going to have a good sense as we go ahead with this. I'm going to guess in the March-April timeframe that all the data will be done, all the data will be collected, and we will be in a position, or rather, our outside consultants will be in a position where they can start writing up remediation plans. Then we can begin to have meetings between the administration and the LEPs to figure out exactly how are we going to tackle this? How much is this going to cost? What's the best way to do it? What's the most efficient way to do it? Those kinds of conversations. All right, now I want to jump to 11. And I just put 10 aside for a moment. 11 says additional site investigations for select sites. We've talked about the seven sites above, and now I've talked about two of the major sites. There are approximately 30 or 40 very small sites that also exist out in town. They are not viewed, as I sit here today, as any major or even a minor site. They're more of like a nuisance site, but we've got many of them. And this additional $70,000 is, there may be some remediation that's required on a few of those sites, but this testing is required so that we can really get a definitive sense of whether or not there's any real remediation, how much remediation may be required on a number of these sites. What we're expecting as well from this data analysis is that there are, of the many sites out there, we're expecting the data analysis to come back showing us there's no problem and that sort of thing. But we want to be very specific. I want to be able to, what I've been telling everybody from an administration standpoint is I want to say, if we're going to take a site off the list, I want somebody to definitively say, there's no problem there. And somebody's going to write on the dotted line because it certainly can't be me because I'm not doing the testing. So, so that 70,000 is going to be, we think, more than enough to cover all these little sites out there, to be absolutely sure that there are no sites out there remaining that we need to remediate. Okay, so that's really the overview of what I see. What I see now is this money will not only remediate these sites, but will get me the data that we need. I will be back to you to talk about, in months, I will be back to you to talk about what it will cost to write up the remediation plans. After the remediation plans are done, I will be back to talk to you about what is it going to cost to remediate the main sites that we have before us. To pin down exact numbers now, as I said earlier, it's pretty much impossible to do. All right, let's talk about 10 for a moment. And before the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Flynn was focused on 10, and he felt that we should, we should split that out from this bond resolution. Why? The answer's simple. 10 was put in because, from an, I put it in because from an operational organizational standpoint, to me, it makes a lot of sense that when I have people out in the field doing testing, I want all the testing done in one fell swoop. I don't want testing done where everybody's out there mobilizing, doing things, and then everybody goes back and they get the data, and then we've got to send everybody out again. To me, it makes no sense. Let's send people out and do what needs to be done. What happened at the W, what happened at the WPCA is, as you may recall, in a previous meeting, we talked about the hardening project. The hardening project is the project where they're building a wall around the WPCA, and I know you've heard about it ad nauseam. We also discovered PCBs and some contaminants along the path of the wall. We have worked out a deal with the state wherein we can continue to build as long as we remediate that path that the wall is being built in. But as a, as a result of that experience, what the state has come back to us and said is, wow, you have PCBs in that area. We want you to do an entire analysis of the entire WPCA site. Well, so that is the cost of $202,000, where we're going to basically look at that entire site. And that, that expense is not really on the landfill. It's got nothing to do with Julian. It's much more of a historical problem. It's much more because, as you all, as you may or may not know, this entire site was built on an old Nike site. This has been the town dump for decades and decades. And because a lot of things were dumped there long before regulations, environmental regulations were even in existence, it's not surprising that there's some historical remnants of PCBs and that sort of thing. So technically, it's not part of the Julian problem, if you will. It's much more of a WPCA environmental hazard problem. So, so in that sense, even though it's, to me, it's all one thing when I try to figure out how economically or most effectively and efficiently we can, we can do this data analysis, it's really not part of the Julian landfill issue. So Mr. Flynn thought it was probably a wise thing to split these two things up to, so that it will allow us to more effectively book and look at expenses on an ongoing forward basis. So, so that, which is why we readily agreed with it at the Board of Selectmen, and you have before you, not one resolution, but two resolutions, the total of which add up to the initial resolution.
So, Mr. Bremer, just, Mr. Bremer, just to clarify, this is okay. The Board of Selectmen voted on two bonding, two bond resolutions, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and we went through this at the Board of Selectmen, and so yes, they absolutely voted on two. So let me just see if there's anything else I need to add before questions. In the packet that I gave you, in addition to the first sheet, what you'll find in all the other sheets behind it are breakdowns of 1, 2, 3, 4, all these different numbers. You'll have the estimates by the outside contractors, both construction as well as our LEPs, to give you the actual numbers. If you have any questions about where are we going to be remediating, at number, we pick a number four, whatever, there are maps in here as well. So you can flip and look at the map, and you'll see exactly where we'll be excavating and taking stuff out. Most of the expense, just so you know, most of the expense of the remediation is taking bad dirt and trucking it out and sending it somewhere else. It costs per ton X amount to get rid of bad dirt, and that's where a lot of the expense is. And, you know, the bringing in clean dirt and throwing down seed and soil and compacting it is relatively minor. The expense is really taking it out, trucking it to a landfill and usually in another state by now, and that costs a lot of money. So, that's where we are now. We're really, we're kind of in the position where the state has asked us to, has basically told us to clean up. The administration wants to do it, and I guess that's why I'm here. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I tried to go as quickly as I could.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Bremer. Mr. Bateson?
You hear me?
He can hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
All right, I just said, Jim, I just want to walk through the numbers of where we are. I heard Tom's presentation. It sounds like we left off last time, or last fiscal year, I'll say, we were at $2.1 million. Right now, minus the $200,000 for the hardening project, looks like we're at about 1.4. So right now, we're looking at total costs of 3.5 million, and it sounds like Tom is saying that for eight, nine, and 11, these costs are just to consult and assess. There's no cleanup for eight, nine, and 11 proposed yet because we don't have the plan. So it looks like we still have, eight, nine, and 11 is open-ended, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, do you guys, I, I gotta ask. I mean, what's a ballpark on that? Do we have any idea? I mean, I'm looking at the ones up above, and it looks like it's several hundred thousand dollars. Am I looking at another several hundred thousand to clean up those?
No, I think, I think you're looking at much more than that. But as I sit here today, I really can't give you a number because, as I said earlier, we are, we don't have all the data, so I don't know how bad it is. I can say, though, that based on the analysis, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, at the fill pile itself, the main, the fill pile, for lack of the mountain, I have to say that the initial data that we received was substantially better than we expected. Now, having said that, I know I may eat those words four months from now, but right now, it looks like it's much better than we expected. So I'm very hopeful that the remediation of that particular site is not as bad slash expensive as I thought it was six months ago when we, when I started to get involved in this project. But no, I really can't tell you what it's going to cost because we really don't have the remediation plans. And could it be a million dollars per site? Sure. Could it be substantially more than that? Sure. Could it be less? Sure. So, but I just don't know.
All right, Tom, I appreciate your candor on eight, nine, and 11. I know that these things are hard to pin down, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I need to know. What I'd like to see you guys do in the future, I find this presentation, I don't have a problem with. I think what I'm getting hung up on is, is I know that we like to dedicate costs per fiscal year, but in this, something as large as this, I'd like to see us keep a running total of where we are. I found that the other night when I had to pick up this project and find out where we were, it was hard for me to assess where we were last year, how much we spent to date, and, you know, so forth. Even though it's split up over fiscal years, I do think that it's beneficial to us as a board to know in total what our sunk costs are on this so that we have a total ballpark of where we are. So, you know, next time you revisit this schedule, could you include what that 2.1 was and where it went and how we funded it? Because I don't, I don't know about you guys, but we deal with a lot of numbers, that 2.1. I can't even remember how we financed that. I know that, you know, there was some stuff, but I don't want to revisit that. But if you could just put that in the presentation and forward it to us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson.
That's not a problem. We were, I was looking at the same exact thing. I will say that we haven't bonded anything yet, that all the money that's been spent to date, that's my understanding, is all out of operating expenses. So, but I'm, I was surprised when I asked the same question you're asking, that some of these expenses go back to 2015, which I had no idea was that old. But, so I'm learning as well. But before the next presentation, whenever that is, I'll be happy to put out exactly what's been spent on an annual basis or however, however I can to make it as easily understandable as I can so that you can see how much has been spent on data, you know, lawyers, remediation, whatever the major stuff is. I'll give you a breakdown of that.
So, Mr. Bremer, our next, we have an organizational meeting, and then followed by a regular meeting on December 1. So this would be a spreadsheet. Can you have that to us on, at our December 1 meeting? This way we walk into, yes, okay. This way we walk into 2021, knowing. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bateson, Ms. Charlton.
I'm going to have it broken out on a, on a fiscal annual basis. Is that all right?
That's, that's perfect, thank you. Ms. Charlton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Bremer, thank you for the presentation. When you started out, you made reference to the consent decree with the state, and the way you characterized it is, we agreed to fix it. And I'm, I'm wondering if you can clarify what that means. And specifically, as I recall, and some of my colleagues, correct me if I'm not using the exact right words, but when these issues came to light, in a number of the areas, we had what were characterized as exceedances of certain materials. But they were below the threshold that the state would require us to do a cleanup. But even given that, the town decided out of an abundance of caution to go ahead and remediate anyway. So can you just clarify, when, when you're within these costs and within what we've agreed to with the state, when we say we're going to fix things, what exactly does that mean? Are we, are we, did we agree to fix things to simply comply with the state requirements? Or we're still, in this plan, are we still going beyond, above and beyond what was, what was required based on the safety standards that the state had put forth?
All the, all these, all the sites that we're talking about on this list are all sites that have exceeded the state require, have exceeded the allowable ranges by the state. And I, and I think I understand where you're going. So my initial answer is no. Everything that's on this list, we're, we're kind of committed to do with the state. These are all either asbestos was over, PCBs, whatever. But all the different, we're not, this isn't, this isn't, boy, it'd be nice to clean this up. This is kind of, no, we have to clean this up to, to be consistent with what the state requires. When we talk about, there's one other site, which I haven't spoken about, which is Gould Manor Park. Gould Manor Park is not on this list. Gould Manor Park is not subject to the consent order because A, it has nothing to do with the Julian fill. And although part of the... Uh, and although part of the Gould Manor Park, right along the sidewalk, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to bore you with the details, but there's a little bit of a sidewalk on the Gould Manor Park. And that, that's considered part of this list, and that's considered something that we have to clean up. But the remainder of Gould Manor Park has all been tested, and there are his, there is basically historical contaminants on the park. And so the question then becomes, from a town standpoint, since the state doesn't really have jurisdiction over that park, because it is, because the, we are, the exceedances are not so bad. Then the question becomes, well, we want to clean up the park, for obvious reasons, kids playing on the park, to what level do we need to clean up park up? Is it the level residential, is it industrial, is it XYZ? And that conversation we are still having, because there's still some ideas on how we can fix the park up in the most cost-effective way. But, that number for Gould Manor is not contained in any of this. But, other than the Gould Manor site, I'm not aware of any site that it's really up to us to decide what level we want to clean it up to, and we just want to be, uh, to lack of a better phrase, nice guys and just be right by citizenry. We're really in a position where we're cleaning up because the state's required us to, and we're cleaning up to whatever the state says we have to, that's the level we're cleaning it up to. So I, I hope that answers your question. It's really, in my mind, as I sit here now, knowing what I know, it's really Gould Manor is really the only site that we have, uh, what I'll consider, from a town standpoint, flexibility in terms of cleaning it up.
Okay, and thank you, that is, that is very helpful. So I do, I do recall, and I don't have the old schedules, I do recall that there were a number of those sites at one point where, um, we had slight exceedances that were below the state threshold, but we were going to clean them up. So I'm, I'm gonna assume then, what you're saying is that those were already remediated, the only one that's still got some potential work is Gould Manor, and that this schedule for us is, um, these are all, uh, above that level and are absolutely required. Is that a correct summary?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Uh, Mr. Matola?
Thank you. Um, on the consent order, um, is there a time limit that we have to clean up these sites?
There is.
You know how long it is?
It's not so much, it's, well, I, I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I think, I think we have about a year in order to put remediation plans together. I don't think there's a, we have to have, uh, a Penfield or something like that done in a year or anything like that. We don't have a gun to our head, but we have to, uh, we have to move things along, let's put it that way.
Okay.
And I, I would also add, I would also add that, in my mind, trying to clean things up, I think in terms of months. What I've learned from my, uh, outside consultants is that they think in terms of years.
Do you think in terms of years, that, from a cost perspective also? In other words, I mean, if, if, if eight, nine, and 11 cost, God forbid, a ton of money, is that something that, that we can spread out over a number of years? I, I don't know if we want to do it that way, maybe you can't answer that question yet, but, uh, is that something to consider? I, I guess is my, my question. And maybe simply it's not the right thing to do, but, okay.
Well, I, I, well, I, I have to also add, I mean, it's, uh, one of the things that we're very focused on is, is, um, resident safety. We don't want to do anything that's gonna harm, harm anybody. So, in terms of these sites, uh, you know, we have done great lengths to make sure that there's, there's no safety concerns. Um, but you're absolutely right. I think one of the things that we'll be focusing on in terms of moving forward, certainly on the major sites, is A, what's it gonna cost on an annual basis? And B, you know, how long will this take? How do we do this? I want to do it as, I want to do it as quickly as I can, but as cost-effectively as I can. Rather than, uh, you know, let's spend all the money and get it all done in three months. If I, if I could save half the number and take nine months to do it, I'll be the first one to sign up for those nine months.
And can, can I just add to that? By, by the nature, by the nature of the, uh, the fact that we're bonding this money, it's being spread out over many years. So this is the, uh, you know, a- as, uh, Tom Bremer said, this is the first bond issuance that we'll be doing, or the first bond authorization that we'll be doing related to this. But there will be more, and as long as the, as long as those future costs are eligible to be bonded, we'll bond them. So, by that nature, they will, they will be spread out.
So, okay, um, and I get, I get all that. Hey, is, is the consent order that we entered into, is that on the town website anywhere? Or, can we get a copy?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Sure, I, I'll be happy, I think it's on the website already, but I'll be happy to send, if you want to, I'd be happy to send everybody a copy of the consent order.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. Uh, Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. Um, I think it was, uh, Mr. Schmidt who was speaking about the bonding. I'm, I'm curious, uh, th- this is the first, so we're, we're 2.3 into this right now, I think? And we, we haven't bonded a dollar? And you just said, oh, we're, now this falls within our bonding rules, or I, I don't remember exactly what you said. But, I mean, I don't know that it does, right? So, what, what is the, what is the motivation, what is the, the reasoning for, for bonding this? I'm, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just curious. Cause it doesn't fall within our bonding standard that we have as a board.
So I, I guess I would ask, what, um, what you see in the bond policy that, that might prohibit this? With the way that we view it, this is an infra, this is part of the town infrastructure, and, uh, you know, infrastructure costs, repairs, remediation, uh, are eligible for to be bonded. And, according to the policy, they would fit within the, uh, those that are eligible for 20 years.
Yeah, Mr. Dewitt, we have Bond Counsel on the call too, so I think he might be able to, to, um, give you some insight into that. Mr. Staffroom?
Yes, uh, uh, welcome, hello all. Uh, I would just add that we have discussed this with Mr. Bremer and with Mr. Schmidt, and obviously these costs, uh, are bondable. Uh, they are a long-term cost because you're obviously going to re, going to remediate, uh, sites that are gonna be hopefully re- remediated forever. So, I mean, you have your own bonding policy, but I would agree with, I would agree with what was just said. Clearly, these are part of the infrastructure of the, of the town, they're town-owned sites, be they, be they park sites, be they school sites, be they, uh, other sites. So, we're clearly, uh, we're clearly of the opinion that this is something that is, is bondable. And over long-term.
Okay. I, I don't have, I don't have my bonding policy here real quick, or I would be looking, but I, I appreciate your, your comments, Mr. Staffroom. Um, it, it, the 20 years too is what gets me. So, I agree that we hope that we remediate, and this goes on for the next 200 years without any problems. But, but we, you know, we bond, we, we bond like, we bond trucks that we keep for 30 years, and we don't, and we don't bond them for, for 20 years. So, you know, I mean, the period, I don't know if it's based on the period of performance, which would be hopefully within the next five years, or is it the long-term, you know, I mean, we're, some other board of finance is gonna be sitting here looking at a waterfall chart 19 years from now going, wow, we're finally paid off with that two and a half, uh, or one and a half million dollar bond on the fill pile, and, and there's more to come. So, I, that, that's why I, I question not only the bonding, which you answered, but, but the, but the length of the bonding, I guess.
Well, as you, as you know, and as the board has, um, has adopted policies over the years, the, the timing of the issuance of the bonds is normally related to the life of the infrastructure. So, uh, you bond trucks oftentimes for five years, because they last five years, you bond schools for 20 years, even though the state law would allow you to bond them for 30 years, you're more conservative in that regard. I think that these expenses are clearly expenses that, um, uh, something to be taken out of the ground and put back in the ground. So, I don't know what the determinate period is that would last, but it's certainly probably lo, hopefully longer than 20 years.
Yeah, great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Staffroom. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Walsh?
I'll wait for everybody else to be done.
Okay, I think, uh, everyone else is done, Jim. I looked around. Yup.
Um, in regards to the numbers that we discussed, um, and specifically, the, I think it was the, um, Town's Finance Department had put together this document back in April, dated April 23rd of 2000. It seems to take it to 1, yup, April, dated April 23rd of 2000, it's entitled Town of Fairfield Fillpile Remediation Available Balance As of April 23rd, 2000.
2020.
Twenty, excuse me, 2020. Did we add three, and it says that the total revised budget's 1.8 million dollars, but I've heard a number of people speak tonight about 2.1 million dollars. Did we add $300,000, and if so, when?
I, you know, Mr. Walsh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Who's gonna speak?
Mr. Schmidt.
Jared, Jared Schmidt. The, the original amount, from my understanding, was a, uh, an operating budget amount was not bonded for, uh, for a total of 2.2 million dollars. That, with this, this, this bond would be 1.484 additional.
Well, actually, the original budget amount for this, and these documents were prepared by our controller, who I think was at the time our interim CFO, this document, um, was an original budget listed on this form for $800,000. And then we added 1.8, but then we added a million dollars to it, so that on April 23rd of 2020, we have a total revised budget of 1.8 million dollars, it says. And then it lists all these expenses and the available balance as of April 23rd of 2020, says that there was $148,614.56. How did we, the other $300,000, get into this account? If it did?
So, Mr. Walsh, this is, uh, this is Mr. Brown, I think, and I would ask Mr. Schmidt to confirm this with Ms. Blasikmar. We went into debt service, I believe we had additional funds into debt service. We had a meeting and we took a vote to move either 300 or 400,000 from debt service into this fund, so they could utilize that. Utilize the funds to continue with what, with what Mr. Carey had to, um, with the work that he had to continue and finish.
Okay.
So does any, does any other, that's, that's, that is complete memory recollection, I don't have any notes in front of me, but I think I'm pretty close.
I think you're right, actually. I'm starting to think of, I think you're actually right. We will confirm that tomorrow. I'm thinking you're right, that we may have moved it during the budget cycle, or something around, where there was some extra monies that were available at the end, and we moved 300, we may have moved. But, um, that being said, um, when the, are you planning, Mr. Bremer, on redoing this form? Cause I think it's, you know, I heard you mention fiscal year spending. Um, I think we need this document continually updated, so that at any point in time, any of us can know how much we've spent on this remediation and this cleanup. So, I don't mind that if you prepare a different document, where you keep track of it on a fiscal year basis, but for all of us to be able to look at this and see where we stand on total spending on this remediation, um, would be valuable thing to have.
All right, that, that letter is dated April 23rd, 2020?
Yes, and it was presented to us, I think, at our April 29th meeting.
All right, I'll, I'll do both.
That'd be great.
I'll do both, because I think annually, it's probably makes sense. But I'll, I'll definitely do both.
And the great thing about this is on the second page, um, for each of the different sections of spending, such as legal services, it breaks down the different firms and what they build on this to date. And, and same thing for environmental services. It breaks down, at least on April 23rd, what the three environmental service companies, waste cleanup companies, it says in parentheses, um, were, how much they billed to date. Uh, so that'd be great, if we can get that updated. And as far as the transfers coming in, um, maybe we should list, list each transfer and the date of the transfer, so that none of us can forget about that again. We don't have to ask these questions time in and time out. Okay, okay, that'd be, okay. Uh, my next questions go to the, the summary page called bonding needed for environmental testing and remediation costs. Um, yup. This Jennings Beach parking lot, this seems to be new to at least me, and I think I've spoken to one or two of our board of finance members, to see if I had recollection of anything on this Jennings Beach parking lot. When did that first come to light? Have we known about that for a long time?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
None of these sites are new or anything like that.
Okay. Um, can we get Mr. Olson, um, to just give us a summary of each of these, the remediation in general that needs to be done at each of these sites? And then, if you could follow that up with, in looking at the remediation costs versus the consultant oversight costs, as you go through it, if you can advise me on why, in some circumstances, the consultant oversight cost is at least the same amount as the remediation cost, or in one case, at least double the remediation cost? Because I thought the main cost, from talking to Mr. Bremer that earlier, was taking this stuff away and putting it at a place that will take it, is the most expensive part of this.
Yeah, I would say that's...
Take it from there.
All right, uh, well, Mr. Olson's on the line, he can certainly answer the question. Great.
Sure, sure, good, good evening, everybody. It's, uh, Jim Olson from TimeBond. Um, I'm looking at the table here and the summary of sites. Um, if, if we look at the first site, the Jennings Beach Parking Lot, um, that site has been on the list for quite a while. Um, there's, there's a fair amount of soil to pull out there, that's why you have a fairly elevated number. Um, uh, those are our consulting costs, and the consulting costs consist of our, our time observing the contractor, um, our time collecting samples, submitting the samples to a laboratory for laboratory analysis, um, our field equipment, uh, reporting time, and, um, and, uh, cost for disposal characterization sampling that the contractor needs. Um, all of our costs are time and materials, and our costs are based on the, um, the timeframes that the contractor has given us, of how long it's gonna take him to dig the soil up. So we had gotten some numbers from Cisco saying how many days they're gonna be out there, and we have, we have one staff person out there overseeing him, and that we have a certain amount of samples that need to be collected, and then our standard report takes about, um, about a few days for pair. Um, so for Jennings Beach Parking Lot, it's, um, soils that are impacted with, with compounds called polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PHs. Uh, for McKinley School, that's, um, soil has to be removed out of there and taken off-site for disposal. Um, the soil there is, is contaminated with PHs, arsenic, and asbestos, corresponding consultant over... Corresponding consultant oversight costs. Um, for the Osborne School Parking Area, that soil is contaminated with, uh, PHs. Again, it's soil excavation, um, removal and disposal off-site, um, and our corresponding consulting costs. And, and just to add, when the, when the soil's removed, the state makes us come in and do a certain amount of, um, what we call confirmatory soil sampling to show that we got all the contaminants. And then there's a certain frequency of samples and numbers you have to collect per state guidelines. Uh, for Mill Hill, um, that soil is, um, contaminated with PHs. Again, now, I, I know some of these numbers seem somewhat out of line. Um, again, we, we basically calculate our numbers on the days the contractor gave us on how long they're gonna be on-site, and we just did some straight calculations. If, if it turns out to be less, like I'm looking for Mill Hill, you know, and some of the other ones, other ones, our cost should not be as much or more than the contractor's cost. So, we'll, we'll reevaluate those numbers before we get to each site to make sure they're, they're true. Um, you know, again, we, we got those, we developed those based on the estimates the contractor gave us. Um, Sunset Avenue, the soil there is impacted with arsenic. Again, a straight excavation job taken for off-site disposal. Um, Old Dam Road, um, that site is a PCB site, and as all you probably know, you know, PCBs are fairly regulated. The previous sites do not have PCBs. We, we included some extra cost there because I think we're gonna have to jump through some hoops, um, with the regulators because it is a PCB site. Um, uh, the, the consent order, um, covers the, the, the sites, but if there's PCB, uh, PCBs on them, you actually, you have to deal with the EPA too, which is a whole separate entity. The consent order is with Connecticut Deep. So, we probably, I don't wanna break down right in front of me, but we probably included some extra cost in there with the deal with EPA. And, um, Southport Beach, that's a site, um, impacted with, um, uh, that one has, um, asbestos in it.
Okay. Can we stop right there? Um, so, in regards to the Old Dam Road, your consultant oversight cost being more than double what the, um, remediation cost is because of it having PCBs and the extra regulatory work that you have to do?
That's part of it, correct.
What's the other part?
Um, you know, again, we, we developed our numbers based on what the contractor gave us for the estimated number of days they're gonna be there. Um, it's just straight, straight math and number of days and our persons' hourly rate and how many days they're gonna be there, so, um...
For, for eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars, it doesn't look like a lot of days considering that, that also cost comes with the cost of disposing of PCBs, correct?
That's correct, yep.
So, your days shouldn't be that many as well?
Yeah, I would have to look at all these numbers again and really drill down, and I, I mean, I, I haven't seen breakdowns of the contractor's numbers. Um, I've only seen these, um, these lump sum, or at least these single amounts, so I don't know what to make up their number is.
Okay. Are any of these, and, and this question's general to anybody on the town side as well, um, but is any of these cause remediation costs, one through seven, have anything to do with the alleged, um, Julian, um, uh, contamination at our fill site?
Well, these are all, all seven are all related to Julian. These are all, you know, we took stuff out of the fill pile and we placed it around town. So, does that answer your question, or?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a pretty direct answer, so that's all I needed to know on that. Okay, if, um, uh, and then in, Mr. Olson, in regards to eight, nine, and eleven, do you know, I mean, those are just consult, you're just trying to figure out what's there still right now? You, you don't, you don't, you know, those, those are just costs for you to do your analysis, correct?
Yeah, I, um, I can speak for, uh, eight, I mean, I'm sorry, I can speak for nine, ten, and eleven. Uh, Site Eight is, uh, what is the consultant on that job is Western and Sampson. But I believe from what I'm hearing, that's straight investigation costs. I can tell you for nine, that's to complete the investigation and do the remedial action plan. So, that includes both. Um, it doesn't include any remediation oversight or contractor costs. Um, ten is, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant, it's for the, um, uh, you know, for the, for a site-wide, um, investigation of the significant environmental hazard of PCBs. And then eleven is for that second set of sites that Tom was talking about. We need to complete the investigations on those. Those are the, um, lower priority sites, as Tom was mentioning.
Yeah. All right. And a ten percent contingency is normal? Mr. Olson?
Um, I generally go a little higher contingency than that, to, to be honest with you. I mean, I, you know, I generally collude, you know, like a twenty percent. I'm not sure where that ten percent came from.
Okay.
Exactly, that came from me. I thought ten percent should be sufficient. Because a lot of this is construction, and I'm, I'm pretty confident, confident with the construction numbers.
All right. Uh, and then the legal fees, deep enforcement, what does that consist of, the estimate for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Well, basically, we have, we have incurred a number of legal fees relative to the fill pile. As you may recall, there are a number of lawsuits that are outstanding as we speak related to the Julian fill pile. What I've been told by our bond council is we, we are unable to bond any legal fees relative to litigation costs. What these costs are, have been, are occurring is we can bond legal counsel fees that are related to deep enforcement, the negotiations over consent order, that sort of thing. The meetings between the lawyers, uh, as new issues come up and how we're gonna deal with those. So, the a hundred and eighty thousand dollars reflects what has, what has already been spent, uh, regarding, uh, the consent order and all these different, uh, sites that are listed, uh, on this page.
So, those funds have already been spent, but they're included in the bond to reimburse what accounts if they've already been spent?
Well, we're basically, we basically, you know, we talked earlier about the two point one, two point two, whatever the number is. We've kind of set up an account that when we, when we get costs that are incurred relative to the fill pile, I'll give you a quick example. Um, we did the DPW audit. It's related to the fill pile. But where do those fees come from? We don't have an account for that. So, what we've done is we've set up an account, and, and basically, that's where the money that has been allocated has been put. And so, so as we draw against that, um, we draw against it. So, where did the a hundred and eighty thousand come? It came out of that two point one, two point two million dollars, whatever it was, that was, that was put into the, uh, this account. So, that's where it came out of, and yes, if we bond the hundred and eighty, that will go back into that account. And, and is that a big boon for us? I don't think so because what I'm, what I'm sensing and, well, what I'm sensing as we go forward is there will be additional expenses that may not or are not bondable, but are still gonna be related. And since we don't have any extra monies in other accounts, we wanna put some money back into this account to anticipate those expenses that we will incur throughout the rest of this year.
Okay. Does that account that you have set up on our books, um, does that have a positive balance today? Without doing this bond?
I believe it does, but a very small amount because what we've done is we have started remediation because we've been so late with the consent order. Because, because the issue that we're struggling with is we had a lot of contractors that give us their price quotes months and months ago because we thought we'd be able to move on this earlier. So, basically, what we're doing is we started, and we're eating into that money rapidly with the remediation efforts. So, to answer your, your question, yes, there's a small amount left in that account, but we're going forward.
Okay, so, I guess this brings me back to my question. On April twenty-third of twenty twenty, the document shows that the legal fees that have been spent, um, to date, uh, had been, I just wanna make sure I'm completely accurate, eighty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. And that you'd also encumbered the money for future legal fees for an additional, and I'm not sure whether you had bills in that you just hadn't paid, but, um, you'd also encumbered the money, it says here, for about sixty-three thousand dollars more. And those two firms were Coles, Baldwin, and Kraft, and Wigan and Dana. And are those still the only two firms that you're talking about in regards to the a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Uh, I'm not sure about Coles. I would say Wigan and Dana is the vast bulk of the a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They are our outside, they are our outside lawyers for, uh, the fill pile.
Okay, so if you looked at that report on April twenty-third, twenty twenty, you had eighty-two thousand approximately spent and another, um, sixty-three thousand dollars, um, encumbered. Um, so, that's like a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, or maybe it's a hundred and forty-five. I'm just doing this off the top of my head. But is the rest of the one eighty, the difference between whatever we were, had spent and encumbered, either a hundred and forty-five or a hundred and fifty-five, and the one eighty? Or is this a hundred and eighty something new?
I can't answer the question because I don't know the numbers, I, I don't, I don't know the April twenty-third numbers well. I can tell you that we've spent a considerable amount of money in the last four, five months on legal fees.
Okay. Well, maybe Mr. Schmidt can get us an analysis on it from the Finance Department because I'm just trying to get a handle on what the legal fees that are being spent are because I'm trying to figure out whether the hundred and forty-five or a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that were either spent or encumbered on April twenty-third, where you deduct it from the monies that we had given to this account, is different, and you plan on spending a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more with the bond amount? Because that's the way it makes it look. It makes it look like you're asking for one point six eight five thousand dollars, and a hundred and eighty of it is either for new legal fees that we project in the future will spend, or is it to make up for the old fees that we've already spent already? I'm just trying to get a handle on it.
I don't think, it's to make up for old fees. Yeah, it's to make up for old fees. This isn't about mutual fees.
We shouldn't be making up for old fees because we've spent those fees with money that we've already given. We, we, we've, we've actually given money to the account to pay those bills. So, we shouldn't be bonding for stuff, for money, that we've already spent in cash into accounts that we set up. We should be bonding for money if you think that we need more legal fees that you're gonna need to draw against.
And I think that's the, the nuance here is that I, I think you're talking about cash versus what we're budgeting. And I, I will provide you with a full analysis of this.
No, I'm talking about actual cash that we moved. We moved money into accounts. We moved actual cash monies into accounts. We moved three hundred thousand dollars, as Mr. Brown said earlier, out of a debt service account that we had fully funded and had money in it. And we were told we could move three hundred thousand dollars of that because there was no need for it. That's cash. That's, that's money we budgeted for, and it's money that either we have because of some bonding premium, or it's actually money that we bonded and we collected from taxpayers. It's actual cash. So, I need to find out, I need an analysis to figure out what happened and, and to figure out whether we are bonding the a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for future legal fees. And you've been told by our lawyers that we're gonna need at least that amount of money.
I didn't, I didn't catch the last thing you said. What was the last thing you said?
I think that I said whether you're, whether we're bonding for future, some future expense. Like you, you know another hundred and eighty thousand dollars is coming. Because the money's already been spent, the hundred and eighty. And we have a document dated April twenty-third, two thousand twenty to show that.
Well, the a hundred and eighty thousand, I, I, maybe I, maybe I didn't do a, a clear enough job. The a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we wanna bond has already been spent. Those are a portion of the legal fees that are bondable. So, you're absolutely right in one sense, and that is, well, we've already spent that money. So, what are we gonna do with that a hundred and eighty thousand? What I said was we wanna put it back into that account.
Right.
Because my strong sense is, between now and the end of the year, we're gonna have other expenses that may or may not be bondable. And so, I'm trying to, uh, put some cash back into that account so that if we have expenses, we can, we can use some of that money for those expenses. Or look at it another way. We've taken operating money, money out of our operating account to pay for things that we could be bonding instead. So, I mean, it's really, it's really a question for you. If that's something that you're uncomfortable doing, or you don't wanna do, uh, then I may be back here, you know, in sixty days saying, okay, I need another fifty thousand for this, that, or the other thing. And what I would prefer to do is bond it now, and then at the end of the year, if that a hundred and eighty thousand is still sitting in the account, then it's still sitting in the account. And we'll be happy to account for all that money.
Okay.
We, we have also, uh, talked to bond council about this issue, about whether or not it is proper for us to bond, uh, for expenses that we've incurred and paid in the past. And we have been told that it, there, there are some limits on it, and maybe Mr. Staffstrom can speak to what those limits are, but that we are within those limits.
Sure. IRS regulations would allow you, uh, to bond, uh, up to a year before for expenses that are needed.
I can't hear Mr. Staff.
Analyzing a project. Can you hear me now?
John, you're breaking up. No, you're breaking up, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Um, now I can hear you, but I didn't hear anything you said before. Can you hear me now?
Uh, okay. What is that, uh, an exception in the IRS regulations, going back a year from the time you passed the bond resolution, to, uh, expense, bond expenses that were incurred in looking at the testing feasibility, uh, efficacy of a project? Uh, we think those fit into this category. Um, I think what folks are trying to do is say these expenses would have been bondable from the beginning if you'd passed the bond resolution, and we're trying to reimburse for the general fund for the legal expenses that would be bondable. We have talked about some of the other legal expenses the town has incurred. Are not bondable because they're obviously relating to litigation and other things.
But let me ask you, Mr. Staffstrom, then, based on that, um, advice, then we can take the entire amount from April twenty-third, two thousand, every expense we ever paid on this, right? And reimburse, and bond it? And then?
Uh, Mr. Walsh, please.
Okay.
No, that's not, that's not, number one, we haven't done an analysis of that. But you're also limited to twenty percent of the amount of whatever the bond issue actually is. So, in this case, if you're bonding one, almost one point five million dollars, that, that look back would be limited to three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Have there been other expenses that are on here that have been spent already? Because I thought you said that we've already started, Mr. Bremer, spending money on a couple of these remediation plans.
Well, that's correct. I mean, I, I've-
How much has been spent on number one? How much has been spent on number one?
Uh, nothing on number one. What we've spent on is number, we've started on five and six. We're hitting the small ones first because we don't have much money.
Okay.
But, but in terms of, now, I've, I've, I've got a copy of your April twenty-third sheet. And I, I, you know, I haven't looked back. Frankly, I didn't look back in our previous expenses, which I understand go back as far as two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. Um, there may be some things on these lists that we could bond. Um, but as, as John said, we haven't done an analysis of those and, uh, but we certainly could do that if you want us to.
Okay. I'll, I'll tell you, regardless of the legal advice that we can do that, I thought that we were, when we originally set up the budget and we transferred money in, cash we transferred in, that we were deciding not to bond at that time, that we were going to use cash to do that. Until we ran out and then we were going to do bonding. I was never expecting that we might go back and bond some past expenses and then at the end of the day end up with some pile of money that we would then dump into the, you know, I guess it'd be the surplus account. I guess it would be the, you know, I don't know where we dumped that money back in. Wouldn't, would it be, would it be, where would that go? There was extra money. So say we follow along and we have this extra hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Where does that money go at the end of the project? Does it go into that year's operating budget? Or does that go into the, you know, the town's surplus account? Mr. Schmidt, where would that go?
As of, as of now, I would say that it stays within that account that it was set up for and unless there's some kind of change made to that.
So then at the end of, at the end of that year, we would then move it into surplus, or what do we do?
I guess that's a decision for the future.
But I think, hey, Mr. Walsh, can I just, because I'm, I'm getting a little confused too. Because we put the money into a special account, cash, right? Specifically for the fill pile. And I thought that that money was being spent to cover actual costs, which is on this April twenty-third sheet. And then when Mr. Carey was running out of money, he came back to us and said, hey, I need three, four hundred thousand more dollars to put into that account because I spent all that money on what I'm looking at on this April twenty-third sheet to cover the rest of my costs. I don't know of any funds that were specifically spent on the fill pile since we have received this sheet. So I'm not sure if we're, if we're talking about the same thing here. I'm, I'm not even sure if the facts are straight. Because either Mr. Carey asked for money that he never spent, or I'm not sure if we're in the complete understanding or you're in the complete understanding of, of the funds that Mr. Walsh is talking about. Because take a look at it, actual expenditures. It says actual expenditures, meaning spent, right? And it goes all the way down to available balance of a hundred and forty-eight thousand. It was probably this meeting where he told us he needed more money. Matter of fact, I have a little note at the end of my, um, of this document I wrote myself that says four hundred thousand dollars. So he probably asked for four hundred thousand dollars that he might have had to come back for, for us to go back into debt service, all vote, to transfer those funds into that specific account that he would have spent on what he knew were upcoming expenses. And now that that, those funds are depleted, we need to, we don't have any more in debt service that we could just vote to switch over. So now we have to start bonding. That's the, that's what I, where I thought we were.
That's where I think we are.
Okay. So, so then back to Mr. Walsh's point, this hundred and eighty thousand. Have you spent money since April that we did not have after this was depleted?
I can tell you that, uh, based on the amount that's on here, I would say no, because there was, uh, as Tom Bremer pointed out earlier, there was a small balance. Uh, second there, there probably would have been. Because if this is reflecting actual expenditures of one point one five as the grand total, if I'm reading this right, I just, just got this. And there was a total of two point two with the, with that additional four hundred thousand dollar transfer, then there, there were expenditures. I don't know the extent or timing of those, but there definitely were.
So then I don't know where you got the money from if it wasn't from this account.
I don't understand. There, the, uh,
So what I'm saying is, we transferred the money, we transferred the money into a specific account specifically for expenditures towards the fill pile, remediation, investigation and what have you. It was over two million. I think one point eight plus four hundred, okay?
Yep.
But thereabouts. Okay.
Confirm that, yeah.
Okay. So was all of those, were those funds, are those funds completely depleted? Let's start with that.
Almost, yes, almost.
Okay, so not quite. So outside of that specific fund, where else did you, what did you spend money on and where did you get it? Would be my question.
I don't, well, the fund is over two million dollars. I don't.
Yeah, but not anymore because you spent it.
No.
So if we're looking at the same page from April, uh, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty, that amount is just under one point two. The total amount that was in there was two point two. So it lea, it still leaves you about a million dollars that could be spent. And there have, there have definitely been expenditures since then for, uh, remediation costs, legal fees, uh, landfill investigation and planning.
Okay. So there's still money, there's still money, there's still, and I'll turn it right back to you, Mr. Walsh. There's still money in this, in that fill pile account that you are utilizing to this day?
That is correct.
All right, Mr. Walsh.
We have, we're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to analyze the April twenty-third budget or the available balances of April twenty-third with what we, what the expenses have been to date. And then, and we have to analyze those too. All I can tell you is that the, we are very close to being completely depleting the two point one or two point, whatever the number is. Um, but I don't have a reconciliation in my mind at least as to how, what we've spent ties into the April twenty-third letter. So we, we will act, we will need to do that.
All right. So then I'll turn it back to Mr. Walsh because, because Mr. Walsh, maybe you can repeat the question. Because I thought you asked about legal fees of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And, and we were told that we were utilizing that funds based on what we were going to bond tonight.
Yeah, and it, it all gets down to past, past expenses and future expenses. And, you know, every time, and Mr. Carey was really good about coming to us, about how much money he needed and he would come to us when he needed more and would present that. Because he was very clear, he didn't want to overspend the amount that, um, we had given him. And if he needed more, he'd come to us. We told him to come to us and he did. Uh, but no one had mentioned that we might be going backwards and refurb, you know, basically with a bond replenishing in amounts that we'd already spent. Because I'm thinking we're given cash for a while and spending it as we went along. And then at some point, we were going to be told a larger number and bond it. But now it appears as though there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we're trying to kind of reimburse for past legal expenses. And I, I really don't want that cash to come back in a future year. To me, that's spent. And if it's spent, then what I would have expected is you tell me, how much legal fees do you, do you anticipate you, you needing? Now, maybe it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but it just seems like a, a, an odd number to be coming if that's what we've already spent. Um,
Well, I, I can, I can tell you, I can tell you the hundred and eighty thousand is what we spent. And, and I haven't looked at, how much do you think we're going to spend over the next six months in legal fees regarding, uh, deep and all that stuff? Um, but I, I'd have to, I need to do, I, I don't want to just pull a number out of my head and say, this is what I think. Because I, I haven't done any analysis of it.
I understand, Tom. I wouldn't want you to pull a number out either. Um, is Mr., is Town Attorney Baldwin on the phone or available?
Uh, he is not. I'm looking at the screen. He is not.
Okay.
But again, he's not, none of these expenses are litigation expenses. So he hasn't really been.
Yeah, I understand. I'm not looking for litigation expenses because I, I didn't think that any of the fill pile remediation expenses that were on the April twenty-third tw- twenty-twenty thing were litigation expenses. Um, it's list.
That I don't know.
But I'm not, but I'm not sure. May, maybe I'm, maybe I'm incorrect with that. Maybe there are litigation expenses. And if you can get that question answered, that would be great too. So.
I definitely will.
Fifteen thousand that he had, actual expenditures and then the encumbered expense from his firm for ten thousand or eleven thousand dollars. If you could find out whether that was for litigation purposes. Because he's not handling the litigation from what I understood. I thought Cohen and Wolf was handling the litigation. Am I incorrect there?
Well, there's, there's, yes, you're incorrect in that there's a number of litigations that we have ongoing right now. When you, when you said Cohen and Wolf, Cohen and Wolf is doing the, the Julian fill pile, what else? For lack of a better, it's an arbitration and they're doing that particular case. But there are other cases now that are involved.
Okay. And Cohen and Wolf's not handling all of them? Some of them are being handled by Mr. Baldwin's firm?
I believe so. But I'll, I'll have to check exactly who's handling what.
Okay. All right. Um, that's all I have on that question. I'll come back to that later. Ms. Charlton seemed to have her hand up. Maybe she wants to add on to this area, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Charlton?
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Brown and Mr. Walsh. Yeah, I did want to clarify because I, I just want to make sure I, I understand what we're saying. We did set aside cash for legal fees. We did pay the legal fees with those ca, with that cash. So we're not, so essentially what we're doing here, we're not really paying ourselves back. It sounds like we're bonding for contingency. Is that what we're doing? Because that, we're just, we're just. I mean, I think that's what I, I thought that Mr. Bremer said. I just want to clarify. Because it sounds like you said, well, we're going to pay ourselves back and we're going to put this money in the funds that we need it for something else that's there and we don't have to come back to you. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that. Because the, the money that was spent, was spent and had in fact been set aside. So we're, it's, it's not really legal fees we're bonding for. I mean, we paid those. And now we're, you know, really this, you know, the equivalent amount that's in the bond that goes into this account is, is really just for contingency is what it sounds like. But please, if I'm not interpreting that right, please, please clarify. Thank you.
So I do want to make a technical point that, uh, and it is technical, but I think it's important. The, when you appropriated that one point eight million dollars and then transferred the four hundred thousand, that's not cash. That's, that's a budgeted amount. We don't have an account with cash sitting in it for these expenditures. The town maintains a, uh, you know, basically a common cash pool where all of our, our cash is together and in an account. So we don't, we don't have a separate cash account for this. So I just, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, when we say cat, if it's been budgeted, it's been raised from taxpayers, right? So from that standpoint, maybe, maybe technically. But I guess my point was more, you know, this element, we've listed it as legal fees, but it's really not legal fees. It's, it really sounds like it's just contingency at this point. And is that, am I misinterpreting that?
No, I, I don't think you are. I think that's a fair statement. I guess, I guess I looked at it like if I can bond this, knowing, knowing, having lived this, through this for these many months, uh, I know expenses are coming that aren't anticipated. And so I thought if I can bond some, let me bond some. And it's a, it's a, it's a, a safety valve. You're right. It's more of a contingency.
And I, I, that's fair. I understand that. I would just suggest that then we characterize it accordingly on here. Because we, you know, it, it's not really for legal fees. It's really for, um, you know, unknown expenses that may come and in the future. And it's to provide some level of cushion to prevent, um, you having to come back again. And, you know, if that's the case, that's the case. But I, I just wouldn't, you know, characterize it as legal fees because I, I don't think that's what we've already paid for those. So that, that was my only point and thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Any, any other questions? Uh, I'm, uh, that's it. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, I'd like to continue. So I, I agree with Ms. Charlton. I would just like to ask in the future that, um, that to the extent you need legal fees, that you get a quote from, um, our attorneys from what they think their budgets need to be. I don't think that's a, you know, an ask we can't get, um, at least for a period of time, like the next year. How much do you think you're going to need in legal fees? And obviously that's an, could be an inaccurate number. We could have more legal fees than we think and you'd have to come back to us for more money. But I think we've got a, if we're going to be putting money towards these projects, we gotta have to know what we're putting it towards. And we can call it contingency and I, and I don't doubt that there's going to be a substantial more legal fees. I don't, I don't doubt it. So I guess I'm willing to give you the hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But the explanation of going back and paying for things, and maybe we didn't use the word cash correctly. But I think the way our board looks at it is, once we budget it and once our taxpayers pay that money into our coffers, that that money is available to be spent on what we budgeted and to be spent for.
Well, I think, I think, you know, just, just listening to the questions, if I may, I am thinking that perhaps we've, we've, well, perhaps because the consent order took so long, we, we weren't giving you more timely updates. But I'm thinking maybe as part of the quarterly review, we give you what, how much we're spending as of that date kind of thing. And so we can, I mean, I, 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 I'm very comfortable in, in analyzing and making sure that this April twenty-three document folds into a new budget and you can get it on a quarterly basis and this is what we're spending to date and all that kind of stuff. So I, I know, I, I think your points are well taken. I have no problem doing it.
And as far as, as far as future legal costs, that will be a conversation, uh, and discussion we'll have as part of the capital work group and capital planning. Uh, because, uh, you know, to the extent that these costs can be, uh, can be bonded in the future, we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at that and see how much that's going to cost and see where it fits into the capital plan.
Um, yeah, well, at least in regards to this project, you know, I, I want to give you the money that you'll need to spend. But I kind of need it to have, be broken down. I'm willing to not change that number tonight and give you the hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But in future presentations, like when you come back to us for the next bond, how much do we need? How much have we spent? And how much do you think we'll need going forward is kind of where we need to get to. So in, in all areas.
Yeah, I have no, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Tom, I totally trust you on it. I mean, I want to be clear. I mean, you're a very honest, straightforward guy. And I, I just want to know, make sure where, I think we're all looking at this going forward, like how much have we spent? We can look at that, you know, how much have we given you to date? How much is, do you see you need going forward with this? Because I think we all want to meet, we know we need to get the project done. And we want to help you get there as easy as possible. It's just, I think in, in, in further meetings, I, I'm completely comfortable because I know there's going to be a lot more legal expenses. So, and if you have thirty thousand dollars left on that, but you needed it for something else, I know you needed it for something else. But the whole going back thing was just confusing me. So that's the only reason I brought it up. I, I, I have no more questions in regards to this numbers for tonight. I would like to move on to my next question, which is, um, in regards to this bid, I saw the bid that was attached and the only reason I'm looking at it, because it was attached as part of the packet with Cisco LLC. And the only question I really have on it is when you get to the sites that he gives these bids on at the back, after the main page, starting with, I don't know if it's page two of his bid form, but he starts going on to site one, site two on his bid form, he breaks his bids down and probably because he was requested to, based on two different levels of remediation. One is recreational direct exposure criteria and the other is based on residential direct exposure criteria. And his numbers are basically the same for both. But I guess the question is, has it been determined? Maybe Mr. Olson knows this or, or maybe somebody, um, missed, um, one of you guys know it in Town Hall. Um, what are we trying to get to? Are we trying to get to a recreational direct exposure level?
No, no.
Or are we trying to get to a residential direct exposure criteria?
We're going with, we're going with the residential direct exposure. And the reason we are is because the number of these sites, well, first of all, the residential is more strict. But a number of these sites are, are for kids, schools. And I didn't want to start one level here, one level. So I, I made the decision early on that we're just going to do all residential and, and it is what it is. So because I just, I got, it's, there were too many schools involved.
Okay. I, and I think that's a good answer. I think the, the taxpayers in town will feel better since these are a lot of recreational sites that it's the higher standard. So I, I, I think that's a good thing. I just wanted to know as we go forward. Um, attached to that, uh, bid was this bid bond by Aegis Security Insurance Company. And I know we've had in the past some issues with bonds and whether they're still in existence. And I presume that Mr. Baldwin or another attorney has looked at this, correct?
Yep. We've looked at it through purchasing.
Okay. And purchasing too, yeah. Yeah. Definitely purchasing, yeah. So that's been looked at?
Yep.
Okay. Um, if you could ask Mr. Baldwin or, I mean, or if he can call me. The only thing that I saw was I, you know, I looked at this Aegis Security Insurance Company. I know they're licensed through the state of Connecticut's insurance department approved. But, you know, they're doing business in the state of Connecticut and I can't see, I did not seem to see on the Secretary of State's site that they're author- that they filed an authorization to do business in the state of Connecticut. Um, and if somebody could just look into that, I'm not making any accusations. I just want to make sure everything's covered.
Yeah, we have and everything's on the up and up, but I can certainly have, uh, Mr. Baldwin call you on it.
That'd be great. Thank you. And. Okay. And I think Mr. Olson took me through the rest of my questions earlier as we went through. So I think that's covered pretty well. And I think it was smart of Mr. Flynn to want to break these costs for the WPCA, um, out separately. So, you know, thank you, thank him for doing that. Um, and that's the questions, the only questions I have for right now. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
I thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions on item number three, an update on the fill pile? If not, I'm going to move to item number four, which is the bond resolution now four. So. Any further questions?
Oh, actually I do.
Mr. Walsh?
Right, that's Mr. Staffstrum. I, I heard you say earlier in regards to our bond policy under, um, and I'm spe- speaking specifically in regards to our bond policy. You think this fits under the definition of infrastructure? Because to me, it seems like it fits under some type of real estate. I think of infrastructure as being buildings, bridges, actually hard, hard things, not the actual real estate itself.
John?
John, did you get that?
You with us, John?
Yeah, I, I am now. The question was broken up. The question is, does this fit within the category of infrastructure?
Yeah, because my definition of infrastructure, I think is more like hard, hard things and, and real assets on, on, on real estate such as buildings, bridges, you know, actual things other than the real estate. This seems to me to be, we're trying to clean up real estate that was contaminated. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't. What I'm questioning is whether this board should be actually changing our bond policy and not trying to fit it, fit a, a round peg into a square hole.
It's really up to the board. Could fit this within the category of infrastructure if you decided to do that. Because, uh, it, land is part of infrastructure of any building. It's part of, of the infrastructure of a park. It's part of the infrastructure of a parking lot. It's part of the infrastructure of a school. So, I mean, your policy is your policy. It's not legally driven. I think you could fit this with infrastructure if you decided to do that. If you decided to create a second category, I don't know what category you would create other than to speak specifically about the landfill reclamation project. And I don't know if you want a specific ad to your policy to just address that.
No, I think I was thinking more of, uh, creating another category, talking about that we could bond for, um, any type of hazardous waste contamination at any property that the town owns. That's more, I was thinking more of something more direct, which obviously, um, we never really thought about when we created the bond policy. But, but clearly we'll be living with this for years and is definitely a reason to potentially make another category.
No, Mr. Walsh, on top of that, it's a good time to, um, you know, it, it's, we're getting close to the point, but we have to take a look at more than that policy. We need to take a look at our fund balance policy. We may need to want to take a look at our pension, O P M policies. We're going to look, we're looking at our purchasing policy. So it's been a while, uh, since we've looked at everything as a whole. And perhaps that's a project we take on towards the end of this year and the beginning of next year. We definitely need update on our fund balance balance as we go into twenty twenty-one. Would you agree?
Yes.
All right. Any, any other questions, Mr. Walsh?
Nope.
Any other questions from board members on this item? Okay. Seeing now, let's go to item number four. To here, to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, resolve that the attached bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating one million six hundred and eighty-six thousand for environmental testing and remediation costs at various locations in the town of Fairfield, Connecticut, related to the contamination at the town's reclamation yard and authoring the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. On Mr. Dewitt, can I have a second? Mr. Matola? Okay. So right off the bat, I'm going to amend the motion and we'll put it to a board vote. And the amendment is based on the action that we discussed taken by the Board of Selectmen last evening. So I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Finance amend the bond resolution as just presented to be divided into two separate bond resolutions as approved by the Board of Selectmen at the Board of Selectmen meeting on eleven sixteen. Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Testani. Uh, any questions on this amendment? Okay. All those in favor? And then, and then what's going to happen is we're going to discuss each bond resolution separately and vote on them separately. Am I okay so far, Mr. Staffstrum?
You are.
Okay.
You're great.
Okay. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It is unanimous. So we'll take the one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars first. So to here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, resolve that the attached bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand for the environmental testing and remediation costs at various locations in the town of Fairfield, Connecticut, related to the contamination at the town's reclamation yard and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Testani, seconded by Ms. Charlton. Okay. This is now before the board, uh, questions, comments. I am seeing none. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
It's, it's unanimous. Okay. Second, bond resolution. To here, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, resolve that the attached bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating two hundred and two thousand dollars for the costs associated with an environmental hazard investigation and remediation of the town's water pollution control facility and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Mr. Walsh. Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, John. Mr. Staffstrum, appreciate it.
Mr. Staffstrum?
And Mr. Olson, thank you for being here.
Right. You're welcome and glad to be here and speak with you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We're on to item number five. To here, an update on COVID nineteen expenses. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Walsh, seconded by Ms. Charlton. Okay. Uh, Tom, Jared, turning this back over to you.
Good, Jared. Thank you. All right. So let, I'm going to actually go back to, uh, twenty, if I could, just to give you an update on what happened with those expenditures. And, uh, there was about four hundred thou- it was three hundred and ninety-nine thousand and change, uh, that we submitted, uh, both to FEMA, uh, and then whatever FEMA didn't cover, we got, that we didn't get an award letter for, we submitted to the CRF fund, which is being administered by O P M. So that, we essentially had covered, uh, thanks to the good work of county, uh, in our office. Uh, we had ninety-nine point seven percent of the town expenditures, uh, covered by those two programs. There was two hundred and seventy thousand that FEMA covered and then the balance, uh, was submitted per the, uh, uh, recommenda- not the recommendation, but the requirement of O P M. The balance got submitted to O P M for funding through the CRF program. And so the, uh, hundred and twenty-eight thousand was funded through CRF and we just got confirmation of that uh, about, uh, three or four days ago, I believe, that they, that those expenditures were accepted. So there was a very minimal amount, I believe it was about a thousand dollars, that was not a- accepted. That covers, uh, and, you know, just to give you a sense of what those expenditures were, um, so there was about fifty percent, fifty-two percent of it was for overtime costs. There were, there was about ten, almost eleven percent in P P E, about sixteen percent in office modifications. These would be the shields and the barriers between desks, those types of expenditures. Uh, and then there were a number of, of other different expenditures, cleaning, supplies, uh, equipment, food programs, legal fees, uh, that amounted to the balance of that. So that's, that's what happened with the, uh, F Y twenty expenditures. Today, uh, this fiscal year, or for, I should say for the, uh, first quarter of this fiscal year, there have been approximately, so there was a five hundred and eighty-four thousand, and I believe this sheet was sent to you, uh, for, uh, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that was submitted. Four hundred and forty-six thousand of that was for the board, from the Board of Education, which I believe, uh, in conversations that you are going to get an update on that from the V O E next week. The town, so leaving the town portion of that, about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the sheet that you, uh, that you have lays out some of the details about where that money was spent by agency and also by character of the expenditure. Um, so I don't know if there are any questions about that. We, uh, are submitting, obviously submitting for reimbursement. There has been no, uh, no decision made yet from, uh, from any agency about whether or not these would be accepted. But we're, we remain hopeful that we'll follow the same pattern that, of the expenditures that we submitted in F Y twenty. And as far as based on what we know about these expenditures for twenty-one, the, it roughly, it looks like in terms of the things that we're spending money on are roughly about the same proportions in terms of, you know, what's, what's being spent on overtime, what's being spent on P P E. Uh, it seems like they're roughly in the same proportions of, uh, what I mentioned about F Y twenty. Any questions on that?
You're on mute, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, so these are expenses from July to Sep- to the end of September, basically, I told them. We had expenses previous to this, correct? We, I know we did, from March until July.
That's correct.
Okay. So this is in addition to those expenses.
That's correct.
We didn't get that spreadsheet tonight, correct? So can we get, can we get a spreadsheet with combination of the expenses?
The, the spreadsheet should have gone out to you, uh, for the, the ones that, the, uh, expenses that have been incurred for this fiscal year. And we, we left it at this fiscal year because, you know, I think we were going to cover this during next week's quarterly update, but decided to take some of the burden off that meeting. So we left it at this, you know, uh, constrained it to this quarter. As, as I mentioned before, um, when I started, I went back to the F Y twenty, which would have covered the period you're talking about from March to Ju- to July. And we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay. If you, if you could, it's just, it's just good to have, but I understand what you're doing. This is our first quarter. Okay. Questions from the board? Mr. Matola? You're, you're on mute, John. You and I both.
Sorry. Sorry. The, the March through July are the expenses we've been, we have been reimbursed, right? Is that correct?
Uh, technically, we haven't been reimbursed, but we have received award letters from FEMA and we have received another correspondence from O P M saying that they've been approved.
That's what I mean. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Uh, Mr. Schmidt. So to follow up on Mr. Matola's question, um, so we've received award letters from both FEMA and, and this is on the fiscal year twenty expenses I'm talking about, which we don't have the form here tonight. Um, but we've been received award letters from FEMA and from O P M that we will be being reimbursed?
We received an official award letter from FEMA, from O P M. What we received was a, uh, copy of a spreadsheet that had- What we received was a, uh, copy of a spreadsheet that had all the expenditures listed and there was a column that said, yes, it's been accepted or no, it's been denied. And so, and in, in subsequent conversations with them, they are hoping to start processing that, uh, payment next week.
Okay. Um, in regards to the fiscal year '20, if you can just put down, like, what we've been awarded in that spreadsheet and then when we've been paid, advise us when we've been paid, and we could just follow this up at our quarterly, just because I'd like to see the money that really actually comes in to, in order to just close it out. So at some point, I'm hoping that you'll show us that we received all the fiscal year reimbursement and that that amount would be in there and what was unreimbursed.
So are you, are you asking for a confirmation that we actually got a check or some kind of, uh, uh, some kind of payment from them? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to be able to follow up on, let's just talk fiscal year '20. I want to, I mean, award letters are all great and, but, you know, until the, you know, we've learned a long time ago that, you know, with FEMA reimbursement sometimes, it, you know, if we don't follow up on it, we never know whether the, we received the money or not. I, I wanted to follow, I think it's been great, I think Ms. Saxel's done a phenomenal job in keeping track of everything and putting in for all these reimbursements, and I know she's been before us and I know how much hard work she's had to do that. I just kinda want to close the loop at a certain point and hear, oh, that's great. In, in response to the, the award letter, we've now received the check and then I know that that's put behind us.
Yep, and definitely at the, sorry, at the quarterly meeting, we will definitely, uh, let you know either way, whether or not there has, we have received a check and then after that, we'll, uh, keep you posted when we do receive it.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, it might not be this quarter, it might be the following quarter, but at least just kinda just follow up on it so we can see what we tied out at. And then my next question goes to the form that was delivered with our package for fiscal year '21, um, and I appreciate you supplying that and also thank Ms. Saxel for following up. I presume she's doing the exact same thing and filing for these, we're in his person. Is FEMA and OPM, or the state of Connecticut through OPM, they, they're just continuing to reimburse these COVID expenses going forward in the future, just like they had announced for what they had done in, for fiscal year '20? There's no, like, limit? It's as, as long as there's COVID expenses, they'll reimburse us for all that? Is that like an ongoing program and that's been, like, budgeted and funded or, you know, how does that all work?
Yeah, so in terms of the timing, I believe that the, uh, program goes until the end of this calendar year, but I wanna, I wanna double check that, um, and then in terms-
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And if you could just let us know in our next quarterly, how that all works, because if for some reason we're gonna not be able to put in for these expenses anymore, but yet you anticipate that we're gonna have COVID expenses going forward after January 1st of '21, I guess we should know that, that we're not gonna receive any reimbursement anymore.
Definitely. We'll let you know that.
I appreciate that. So, um, uh, and the expenses for, one of the bigger expenses, other than the, I will admit, the very large expenses on the Board of Education side, for their expenses, the next largest expense seems to be for the police department. And what would you describe those expenses as being? The 63,811 for, um, the first three months of the year.
Those are, uh, in, in large part overtime expenditures by the police?
Yeah, I know, I, I understand the over, the overhead expenses, but what, what type of work are they doing? Like, I went into the Old Town Hall to record something and I saw what looked like a police officer there in the lobby. Is that one of those expenses?
I would say, yes, any of, any of those kinds of activities that they had to do related to COVID that are outside of their, you know, what they would normally do.
Okay. It just seems like, I mean, I, I, I don't know what, I guess I'm trying to understand what they're still doing on COVID stuff that I might not know of, like, as, because I'm not involved in Town Hall. So what, what are the added expenses that they're doing?
So let us, we'll, we'll get, uh, have a conversation with them and get those kinds of specifics. And I, you know, what you see in front of you is a total amount, it's not, obviously not listed by month or the, you know, the timing of it isn't really there, so, uh, it's hard to see by looking at this, admittedly, whether this occurred at the beginning of the fiscal year or has occurred, you know, within the last, uh, you know, toward the end of the, the three-month period. So, uh, to your point, I think it's not clear whether or not this, uh, is dissipating over time or, uh, if it's, if it's continuing at the same level, so we'll find that out.
Yeah, if you could just get a, kind of a general consensus on some of these expenses, so you just give us some brief explanation of what's being done, because, you know, I, 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 I just, I just don't know. I mean, obviously, I know that you buy, you know, sanitizer for, you know, when you walk into Town Hall, there's dispensers and stuff, clearly I see that stuff, I know you have extra cleaning expenses and stuff like that. I just don't know what the general nature of the other expenses are. I'm not saying that they're out of whack, I just don't know what they're for and if you could just find out, that would be great.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Uh, quick question, on the scheduled fire PPE from AFG 2019 grant not awarded for 18,000, what's that?
This was, my understanding, this is a, uh, federal program, um, that was applied for, but we didn't get the funding for it.
Is it related to COVID?
Yes.
Okay. Perhaps you could have, uh, Chief McCarthy put something together and, you know, just a memo on what that is specifically?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Bateson. Any further questions on the COVID expenses? I'm seeing none, so we will move on to, move on to item number six, to here an update on the purchasing policy. Um, just a little background on this, and it's actually, the background is in our September 1, Fortify Finance Regular Meeting from September 1, um, in the minutes which we're gonna vote on tonight. So, the, the purchasing policy, as you all recall, uh, needed to be updated based on what we saw as a result of the audit for DPW. And one of the first things that we decided and the town decided to address, I should say the town decided to address, was our purchasing policy. So they put together a working committee of 15 employees, and Mr. Bremmer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, you took the lead in that working committee and-
That is correct.
Okay, and, uh, Ms., Ms. Claire was gonna serve as an late liaison to that committee. Um, at that same meeting on September 1, we asked Mr. DeWitt to once again chair the purchasing committee and Ms. Charlton agreed to work with Chris. So between September 1 and tonight, the purchasing policy, an updating purchasing policy has been a work in progress and there is a draft, and Mr. Bremmer shared that draft, uh, with Mr. DeWitt and Ms. Charlton. And tonight, they're gonna give us their thoughts and we'll have a discussion on, on the, on where we're at with this policy, keeping in mind that at some point, as a board, we need to vote on the policy. We're not there yet, um, but we're, we're, I guess we're one step closer, or maybe not, depending on what we hear tonight. So with that said, uh, Mr. DeWitt, and I'd like to turn it over to you. And, um, Mr. Bremmer, obviously feel free to, uh, pipe in as we go along with this discussion. So, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Chris DeWitt. Um, you know, Ms. Charlton and I started looking at the policy, um, individually, we had a couple of conversations and, um, quickly, we came to the conclusion that, um, um, we, we, we weren't really seeing what, what we thought we would expect to see at this level. So just to, to verify, um, we had a phone call last Friday, I believe, um, with, uh, Mr. Centefani, and she said, hey, listen, you know, you're familiar with the audit, could, could you take a look at this document and just give us, you know, kind of a high level gut check? And, um, I'm gonna share some of the comments tonight, the, the high-level comments that, um, Ms. Charlton, um, Mr. Centefani and myself, I, I think if, if, if Mr. Centefani were here, um, we would all agree, these are kind of our generic thoughts. They are not a comprehensive list of, of every good and/or bad thing in the policy, they're, they're kind of just high level. So, um, to, to start with, the document as a whole, um, i- i- is really lacking, uh, the basic principles that we would expect to see in, in, in a purchasing policy. So what does that mean? Um, there is, there's no, there's no specific section on vendors, how you keep them, how you get them, how you get rid of them. Um, bidding, the acceptance of bids, the contesting of bids, uh, sections like that are, are missing and, and, and that's kind of a red flag. Um, w- we made some comments early on about, um, any forms or documentation that really needs to be specified in the document. So for example, the document references a code of ethics, the, the code of ethics is not attached to that document. Now, you can debate, well, the code of ethics could change, right? But, you know, there's a common, it's kind of a common thought that you, you attach the code of ethics, version January 2021, whatever, and then there's a link to where you can go find the real policy within the, you know, the, the, um, electronic infrastructure of the town. That, that is missing. Um, another thing that is particularly hard as a reviewer is there's no direct alignment with the audit findings. So the audit findings, i- i- I think we all look at them, it's, it's a large document. And not every audit finding has an answer or a resolution that resides within the purchasing policy. It would have been very, it'd been a lot easier for us as, as reviewers to say, okay, you know, um, audit finding number 12 is directly entered and resolved with the purchasing policy and number 13 is some other policy. But w- we were not given that, that correlation. Um, I understand that that's a, a work in progress. For, for me, and I think Ms. Charlton would agree, I have a hard time, I would have a hard time writing a purchasing policy, kinda going backwards. I, I, I would sit down with all the audit findings and say, okay, 200 audit findings, 10 of them have to do with credit cards, I better write something about credit cards. So, so that's lacking. Um, I, I've been, I've been joking around, half joking, half serious about purchasing policies, saying that any, any policy that everyone who has to live by that policy agrees with, that's a bad policy. And you know why? Because you should all agree with that, you should all have, it should all be an onerous thing for everyone to look at these policies and say, oh, you know, this is gonna cause me work, but, but I gotta live by it. It's, it's through the whole document, the, the language is, is fairly weak in, in that it makes non-compliance almost impossible. Um, terms like, um, might, could, may, right, instead of must and, and should, um, are, are, are throughout the document. Many of those areas, when you look at it backwards, when you, when you finish this document, you gotta train your people. So if you look at it from a backwards perspective, could I put this document in front of somebody and train them? It doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test in, in, in that regard. Um, generally, the structure is not, not grouped well. I, I, I think that's just a matter of, you know, just a matter of the, of finishing and, and functioning. Um, and last, and, and this could, this is something that could, could probably be resolved with a little analysis, but the, the team felt that the threshold for POs and, and, and minimum bids, uh, was increased. Now, anyone who's, who's looking at an increase like that, and especially a finance board, we would expect to see some analysis and see what coverage this provides. So is, so I think they've raised it to $7,000. Is that, does, does that 7,000, you know, does that meet the 80/20 rule? Is 80% of the POs are that value, you know, or 20% of the POs are that value? Uh, we don't know, but we haven't seen that analysis. So that, that's a really high-level analysis. Um, I, I do, I do want to say two things. One, I, I appreciate the, the team putting this together and I, I, I certainly hope that these comments are not, are not taken in, as anything other than constructive criticism. Um, I think they, I think they, they came together, but, you know, I, I pulled my purchasing policies at work and I spoke to a couple of our auditors and they said, Chris, we didn't do this here, you know, we hired somebody to do this. So, you know, and I don't know what the, the process might be, Mr. Chairman, and, and I'll let Ms. Charlton chime in too, but, um, I think it might, it might serve us well to at least find out what Mr. Centefan, send him an RFQ, whatever, what Mr. Centefani might charge us to do this work on our behalf. And again, I'll, I'll open it up, Ms. Charlton has any additional comments?
I think, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Ms. Charlton, do you have additional comments?
Uh, sure, just briefly, thank you, Chris, for that summary. Um, I'll also, you know, I, I want to acknowledge the, the work that the, the town has put in and, and thank them for that. I think, just stepping back, the reason, we all know why we had this DPW audit. It was in response to what happened with the Julian situation and resulted in the many millions of dollars including, of, of costs, uh, in, including what we just approved here tonight. Um, so that was the impetus for the audit. The audit had a number of different findings that we need to get addressed and so what we're really trying to look for in this purchasing policy is, is to make sure that all of those recommendations are adequately covered to protect the town, and we're even thinking a little bit beyond that. I mean, as I looked at this purchasing policy, what I wanted to see was, would this, you know, would this have protected us from that Julian mess if, if this had been in place? And, and that's the sort of thing I think we have to think about and what we hope to see. So, um, you know, so I think we've, we've got some work to do on that and, and this is not easy stuff, you know, I think, um, it, it's, uh, it's, it requires a, a level of subject hire expertise, um, and, and knowledge of best practices that, you know, uh, we don't, th- this is, this is not what we, you know, what we all do for a living. So, um, I, you know, it would be my recommendation that we very strongly consider engaging, um, our outside auditor to provide, uh, maybe not to provide feedback, because I'm, I'm not sure if he's got a good starting point here, but, but to assist us in, in just moving this thing forward. I think the cost would not be significant, I think the value is very significant, and I think all of us, before we vote on a revised policy, should be very confident that we have something that to the extent any policy can guards against the type of issues that led to, you know, what we saw in the Philpyle, the Philpyle situation and, and also just the, you know, the, the basic fundamental building blocks of good internal controls that protect the town and ensure that we have good practices in place and, you know, are, are getting competitive bids on, on things we buy, et cetera. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that this, if there's, if there's one area where it's, it's really worth it to get an outside look and perspective and perhaps help in crafting this thing, this would be it, because there is a lot of risks and a lot of benefits doing it. So that's my two cents, um, and, uh, I'll turn it back to, uh, our chair.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Yep. So, Mr. Bremmer, um, comments from you, thoughts, next step?
Sure, I mean-
Sure, I mean, sure, I think my ego will survive this criticism, and I'm saying it kind of jokingly, but we did put a lot of effort into it, but I can appreciate the comments. My only comment is, if we're going to hire Joe Centefani or someone else, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. What I'm concerned about, though, is I don't want it to be a, how can I put this? I don't want Mr. Centefani to go off and come back a month or so, or whatever, how long timeframe, and he comes and says, here's your new policy, live by it. I don't want to do that, because I'm still in the position where I want to make sure that we work collaboratively on this policy so that regardless of what we think, I've got to get everybody here to buy into it, and I've also got to get, we have to get the Board of Ed to buy into it as well. And that's, that to me is going to be, in my mind at least, a significant hurdle, because I'll just leave it at that. So, look, if your board feels strongly and we should hire Centefani, I'm more than happy to work with them, I'm more than happy to collaborate, I'm more than happy to throw out three-quarters of what we did and start fresh. As I said, I don't have much of an ego on it, I just want it to be better than it was. Let's put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Bremer, appreciate that. Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it's at all helpful, Mr. Bremer, I'd be happy to be the liaison, you know, I'm the guy sitting here tonight, you know, taking shots at the policy as it's written in a respectful manner, I hope you think so, and I'm glad I didn't bruise your ego, I knew you were a big boy. So, but I'm happy to be, I am happy to be the liaison between Joe and, you know, and Town Hall, if you will, and the Board of Ed, because I agree, there's going to have to be something written very specifically that Joe just can't deliver something and say, okay, I'm done. No, there's got to be a review process with internal groups, which, again, I would be happy to help with. And then finally, you know, we all have to look at it. And the only thing I would add to that is that I think there may be some people who are going to have to be beholden to this policy that might not like it, but unfortunately, that is the way policies work.
I have no problem with that, and, you know, to me, it's all about accountability, and it's all about, if this is the new policy, you have to follow it. And I have, you know, that's easy for me, I have no problem being a hammer on that. What I don't want to have happen, and not to belabor it, but I don't want to have something that doesn't work to be foisted on people and say, well, you got to make it work. I don't want to do that. I want to make sure that, hey, can we make this work? We can make it work. I don't care about if somebody says, I don't want to do this. That's a different discussion. That's a discussion I'm happy to have with them. They'll have to do it, but I just want to make sure it's a workable product that everybody can live with, whether they love it or not is kind of besides the point in my mind.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Bremer, what I'm hearing and what we can agree to is that you'll be part of the process. It's not going to be a take it or leave it, and you know, here it is, deal with it. We're not going to do that. So, you'll definitely be part of the process, and we'll figure it out together. Ms. Charlton?
Yeah, I appreciate everything you said, Mr. Bremer. I guess my impression from working with Mr. Centefani and from the types of comments he provided, I think he's, his firm is, you know, experienced at this stuff, I find him to be pragmatic, and just the nature of these engagements, I mean, no, you know, consultants don't do that, they don't develop a vacuum and foist it upon a client, right? There has to be a collaborative process, but I think part of the benefit that we have with their firm is that he did the audit, they did the testing, they don't have to start from scratch and start interviewing a bunch of people to figure out how we do things. They've got a lot of that background, so I think they can hit the ground running. Another element that I would like to, Mr. Brown, or Mr. Dewitt, if you're agreeable, is when we ask them to do this, we might also consider asking if they are able to perhaps help develop training materials. You know, one element that's really important to this is how it gets rolled out to staff and employees, that they understand it, that there's not ambiguity. When policies fail, very often it's that employees did not understand the policies or policies weren't communicated effectively. So, the policy is not going to be worth much unless the implementation includes a good level of training. You know, when we do this, we may find that there's legs to it. You know, Mr. Dewitt referenced a code of ethics, which I've never seen. That code of ethics, you know, was part and parcel of this purchasing policy, and, you know, I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent, you know? So, there's some elements of this where I think we may, you know, have to ask him his thoughts, how it should be scoped, and we should consider, you know, what can be helpful? And at the end of the day, you know, again, Mr. Bremer, I appreciate your reaction to this, because, listen, I hope you'll find that it's helpful, right? This takes something off your guy's plate, I know you have a lot of other things you're focused on, and I do think this can be really additive, and it will give everyone comfort that we are covering these issues in a way that's, you know, again, practical, but protects the interests of the town. So, I would, you know, Mr. Brown, Mr. Dewitt, I'd just like to, you know, ask if I could be part of those conversations with Mr. Centefani, just to, you know, brainstorm what we want to give us in terms of options, and make sure that our board is comfortable with what we get back and that we're going to end up with something that is, you know, helpful to the town and that is, that we'll be able to make sure is implemented properly.
So, thank you, Ms. Charlton. It sounds like we need to send him a scope, and he has to give us a price, right? We don't want just him going off and just writing this up, and then we're all surprised at the end.
Yeah, and ask him perhaps scope it in pieces, right? You know, that the policy might be one piece, helping with, you know, training might be another, but, you know, what could it be, and then how could it be chunked out?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Want to go to the rest of the board who had some comments or questions or thoughts? I'll start with you, Mr. Matola. You're good? Okay, Mr. Tisani, did I saw your hand raised? Did I not?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I think those are all great ideas, and I'm sure, obviously, we, I'm sure we all agree, eminently qualified. My only concern would be, you know, if we were to move forward, would it entail a bid process? What kind of price are we talking about? Where would the money come from? So, I just think we need to be a little cognizant of what we're spending when it comes to, I understand the importance of it, I just think we need to keep in mind, you know, where the money would be allocated from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisani. Mr. Bremer, did you have any additional thoughts? We'd have to discuss on how we would finance this, but it would come out of one of our budgets for the finance or finance department. We'll see what it is. We have to, Mr. Dewitt, you will, you'll work with Ms. Charlton on a scope, and perhaps you can talk to him this week, and we can get some feel for a price a week from tonight?
Yes, I mean, I'd like to use a purchasing policy of, you know, get a request for quotation, but yes, I can, I think we could both gin up a scope, and maybe Mr. Foley could help us get that out to him.
I'll have Mr. Foley available. Should I have him reach out to you, Chris?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for that update, and thanks for kind of laying out where the concerns were. It gives us a better idea of what we need to do moving forward, and I fully support looking externally to Mr. Centefani or others to kind of get this right, because as Ms. Charlton had mentioned, the town is at risk. We're already at risk, we're already dealing with the fallouts and the fill piles and DPW. So, I'm very happy that we're hopefully all going to agree that we need to move this forward, use an outside source to get this right. It's very, very important. I do have another question for Mr. Bremer. I did go back and look at the notes, the minutes from September the first, and you had kind of separated out the purchasing policy from a response to all the recommendations that the audit had found. There were a number of them, and I know that your committee was working towards implementing some of those recommendations. You had said at one of our meetings that, you know, there had been a high level of success in terms of getting those implemented, something like 90%, so we were pretty psyched about that. We had asked several times for you to put in writing what those responses were, what had been done, what the timing was, and I haven't seen anything in writing from you on that. Where are we with that, and when can we expect to see that document?
Well, I'd rather not just send the document, because it's, frankly, it's, I think I'm ready to send the document when you're ready to hear the presentation. I think that's the best way to put it. Maybe sometime next month. We'd be happy to go through all the recommendations. It's quite voluminous, and I think if I just sent it to you cold, it's, of course, we will before the meeting, but I'd say we're 99% there, so if you, if we want to set a date, if you're going to meet sometime in December, I think we're, we can meet that goal, and then we'll send out the document and all the answers to all the recommendations. But I should say that there are going to be a number of recommendations that we believe have to be answered in the purchasing policy, and in fact, we thought they were, or they are, in our draft. So, but of course, if the purchasing policy changes, then obviously we'll have to address those changes. But right now, we can effectively meet in December, and whenever you wish, and we can go through all those responses to all the recommendations.
Thank you. So, yeah, because I'm just, I'm getting confused. So, we, obviously, we just were talking about the purchasing policy, that's one thing, but then you had also, there were a number of recommendations made during the, you know, from the audit, that
Absolutely.
It was my understanding that you were, you had gone forward with your committee, and that they were, that you were moving forward with those recommendations. So, I don't believe that they were contingent on the purchasing policy. So, it's, I'm talking about a separate deal, so maybe I'm confused.
No, well, maybe I didn't speak properly. Number one, as I said earlier, with the two tracks, one is we were going to draft a purchasing policy, and the second track was, we needed to respond to all the recommendations that the audit made. Well, we have a book that we put together of all the recommendations and all the responses to those recommendations. What I'm talking about with the purchasing policy, some of the answers to some of the recommendations are found in the purchasing policy. So, to the extent that policy is going to change now, it may affect some of the answers. But we have all the recommendations, and we have answers to every, if there are 200 listed problems, we have answers to all of them. So, and we can certainly sit down at your December meeting, and we can go through all those. And of course, I'll send it out before that meeting in enough time that you can take a look at it. I'm assuming there are going to be many questions, and we should be able to answer those questions. So, we're able to do that at your December meeting, whenever that is. Additionally, what I also said, I think it was two weeks ago, you asked at the previous meeting whether or not, what has, what recommendations have been implemented already? And I did send that out, saying that there were many that have already been implemented. So, but we're ready to respond to all the recommendations, we're ready to give you that, and we're ready to present at your, whenever your December meeting is, I think we'll be able to put everything together so you can have it and review it.
And I, just to add to that, I think, you know, one of the things that, and one of the reasons I think you haven't seen that full document of the recommendations, is this is, it's really a work in progress. There are a lot of items on there that we're going through, and we'll continue to go through them. We met a couple of weeks ago to get up, to constantly get updates on it, to have staff go back and look at the departments and see how they're performing and how much progress they're making on implementing some of the recommendations. So, it, I mean, it's truly a work in progress, and we'll, you know, it'll continue to evolve, we'll continue to check off the ones that get implemented and continue to work on the ones that aren't.
Okay, thank you. That meeting, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Marmine.
No, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, if we can get that on the agenda, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
December 1st, Mr. Bremer? That's our next, that's our next regular meeting after the organizational meeting.
Well, it's just that Thanksgiving, I'm going to go.
After Thanksgiving.
Done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to cut to the chase to see if we can get that at our next meeting, that's all. So, looks like we're going to have it in December, and I understand it's a working document, things could change, but at least we can see what's been done at our December meeting. So, that's all I was going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Ms. Claire?
Hi, so I'm a little confused now, because I've been waiting for Tom to present his book that he's been putting together to the audit committee, and I thought the audit committee would review this whole, the whole responses before we brought it back to the full board. So, do you want to skip that step, or are you, or do you still want the audit committee to review it, sir?
When's our next audit committee meeting? Is it scheduled?
I think it is before our December meeting.
It's, they're both on December 1st. The audit committee is, some committee is about an hour or an hour and a half before it.
So, Ms. Claire, what do you think? Can we hear it? And it's one right after the other. What would you like to do?
Right. I don't know if that's enough time, because I was assuming we'd go through it very thoroughly.
I'd make this suggestion, I'm sorry, Ms. Claire, I think if we're going to have the audit committee do it, perhaps we do it, and then it's, we, it gets presented to the board at the following month's meeting. Otherwise, I think we're just presenting the same, we're asking the town to present the same thing in two consecutive meetings, and the audit committee doesn't even have time to react to it in case there's feedback. I think it sort of defeats the purpose, so sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, well, no, you're on the committee too.
No, that's exactly my thoughts. But I thought maybe it might even take more than one meeting to review the whole thing.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, the audit committee, if it's okay with the rest of the board, will listen to the results on December 1. The next regular meeting is in January, and that can be a goal, but we'll see how far we get after our meeting on the 1st of December. You know, it, you know, I think I agree with that, because we want to make sure it's right and it's ready to present to the board, and it's been vetted, and at least the audit committee will be on the same page.
Hey, Jim, just real quick question, Mr. Chair. Jack, Tisani, just real quick, just to follow up to that, didn't the policy committee already have meetings separate from the audit committee? Like with Tom, I mean, weren't there already meetings with Tom? I'm just curious, Tom, how many meetings did you have about this over the last
The meeting, the meetings that you're discussing, we're discussing, has to do with the purchasing policy.
Right.
We're discussing the rest, but this is about the rest of the audit.
Okay, I see. And, so, go ahead, Tom.
No, the only thing I would ask is, I don't want it to, and if I may be so bold, I don't want this to become Groundhog Day either. We go to the audit committee, we make a presentation, let's say it takes five hours, 10 hours, whatever, we then have to turn around, three weeks later, we go through the same five or ten hours. I'd really rather not do that. I just, I don't want to do that. If I'm going to go through the audit committee, then I would, and that's fine, I have no problem doing that. I would ask the audit committee then to either do some sort of presentation to the full board before we get there, or something, so that I'm not answering the same exact questions that I just spent five hours doing. You know, I, to me, it's Groundhog Day. I don't want to go through it twice. I will, of course, but I prefer not to have to go through it twice. That's the only thing I ask.
Too bad.
I, I don't think you're going through it twice, because we're, Ms. Leclerc, I'll let Ms. Leclerc answer. Go ahead, Ms. Leclerc.
Well, what I was thinking was that the audit committee might have more suggestions and want to change what policies or procedures, or discuss them further with the town, that we might want to improve some of the things from what Tom is going to present to us.
So you're not presenting the same thing twice, Tom?
That would be, be my, my thought.
I would jump in, too. I'm sorry, Lori Charlton. I, and I appreciate what Mr. Bremer said. I think if, if the, the town is going to go through it in detail with the committee, then I think as a committee, you know, we should hopefully be in a position to make a recommendation. You know, maybe there'd be an abbreviated presentation, but we should be able to say, yes, we went through all these things, and, you know, it all looks good, and who has questions, kind of thing. Or maybe not that abbreviated, but something like that. I appreciate what Mr. Bremer said. The point of going through the committee is to go through the detail, so that we're not rehashing the same thing for the full board. So if everyone's okay with that, we should do it that way. If, if the whole board wants to hash through all the detail, then I think, you know, then, then it's a different answer. But I, I think...
Well, here's, here's what, here's what will happen, right? So we'll, we'll go through the audit committee. Tom, Mr. Bremer, you'll be there to present, and we'll hash through it. There'll be probably some recommendations, and we'll get through that, and then we'll have a final product that we're ready to present to the board, right? The board will get that document before our meeting. They'll have enough time to review it and have some questions, perhaps before the meeting, or perhaps during the meeting. But in the, in the, in the regular meeting with the rest of the board, the full board, I agree, you don't go through it page by page, you just give an outline of where we're at, how we got here, and this is what it looks like. And the committee will be there to answer questions as well, that the board asks them. Does that sound fair?
That sounds more than fair.
Um, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, number one, Tom, I appreciate all the work your committee has done on this. I know you've been meeting for a long time on it, so I appreciate that. And I also appreciate Chris and Lori stepping up for our board and working on it. At some point, I think the draft should kind of be passed around to the whole board, at least I haven't seen it. Because I really don't even know what anybody's talking about here tonight, since I haven't read it. So I have no idea what somebody's talking about. Okay? So, maybe at some point, before it gets too far, we should probably get the draft, so we have some idea what you're talking about, and what Mr. Santafani proposes against what the draft was, so I know what he's talking about after we pay him. So that might be helpful. But I appreciate, you know, I, I really don't want to micromanage this. I think that if the audit committee then goes through and works with you guys, I'm, I'm fine with just having a broader stroke thing. But I would like to see the draft, so that I might be able to propose some questions I would like to get answered during your process. That would be helpful. And then, you know, going through the minutes for tonight and talking about this on September fifteenth during our quarterly meeting, there was a statement in regards to, the first elect, and Kupchik said the town's purchasing department is overworked. She said she'd like to, the BOE purchasing department added to the town with the BOE funding the department instead of filling the BOE purchasing agent position. And she said that she would like to have a conversation with Mr. Cummings on the purchasing policy. Mr. Bremer, do you know whether she's met with Mr. Cummings to, to review the purchasing policies and what the Board of Ed might have issues with, with this draft of the purchasing policy?
We have not done that yet, but it's very much at the top of our list. There have been, there have been a number of issues that we're wrestling with concerning the Board of Ed, so we'll, we'll be having that conversation very shortly.
Well, she should probably meet with them, you know, I, I under, and I appreciate that response, and, you know, but that should probably happen sooner than later, than going through this whole process, and then the Board of Ed weighing in on it. You know, they should probably see a draft of this, and it be taken into account, so that everyone's a shareholder in this, and we can get everybody on board. Thank you.
As far as the purchasing policy is concerned, you're, you're absolutely right. They want to see it, and we will, we will need to send them a draft, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeWitt?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. I just want to address Mr. Walsh's question slash concern. By no means do I want to limit the distribution of this document to absolutely anyone. I'm happy to send it out with my comments attached. Absolutely zero problem. But what I thought you, you all wanted Lori and I to do, was to take a first cut at this thing. You know, it'd be like sending out legal jargon to me. I would just be looking, and I'd go, I have no idea what half this means. You know, we have some background in it. Again, I, I really hope no one thinks we're trying to limit distribution. I just thought we would give a first cut at it, and then, then it would go out to the board. Unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't think it would be at this level where we're at here, but I, I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear on that.
And I, I just want to be clear, I don't think you're, you guys are trying to hide the ball or anything. But now that you guys have raised some of the issues, and I appreciate them, and they, you know, intrigued me, some of the stuff you've brought up, I would just like to at least start reviewing it to, you know, so, so maybe you can get...
I can, if it's okay with Mr. Bremer, I can distribute my copy with, with my, I just have hand, it's, it's in Word, but just red comments of, of what I made. If you're okay, Mr. Bremer, I was sending that, I'll, I'll do that to the board.
That's, that's fine with me.
Probably through Jen, I guess that's right, right, Mr. Brown?
Through Jen, yep, okay.
I'll do that tomorrow. I'll send it to you and Jen tomorrow morning.
All right, so we have two...
I'm not looking forward to the five to ten hour meeting, Mr. Bremer. I'm certainly not looking forward to it. I'm trying to avoid that any way possible.
That makes sense.
The way we avoid it is to hash as much out before we get to the meeting, where we're going to take a look in whatever votes we have to make. Mr. Testani?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jack Testani. Hey, Tom, a couple, oh, quick questions. Number one, I know you have a lot of meetings. I know that, I think we, the audit committee, Mary, maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, which is our liaison, right, to, to the policy that you were developing for purchasing. Am I, am I right with that?
No.
No, the audit subcommittee was not?
No, we were.
No, Chris is.
Chris was, okay, I'm, I apologize. Tom, but do you have a record or a series of notes or whatever that would correspond to, to whatever Chris and Lori might have developed in terms of what they developed for this draft? I mean, I have a similar question to what Jim Walsh alluded to, but perhaps maybe something that, and I know you were hesitant to show it to us, but at the same time, I think it would be helpful for us to also see the work, which I know with many hours, that you put into the purchasing policy as well.
No, I, I, I sent out the, the draft, I don't know, four or five weeks ago, and I know Chris, Mr. DeWitt, sent me his comments, I think it was earlier today. So I haven't had a chance, frankly, to review them. So, but I have no pride of the authorship, as I said earlier. I'll, I'll, you know, I can, I can handle his comments. And if you want to, if you want me to send, it's really up to you what you want. If you want me to send out my draft to all the members, and then Chris can send his comments out to all the members, it's really, it's really whatever, whatever you want to do. As I said when we started this, we were just doing it to try to help the Board of Finance come up with a purchasing policy. I really felt like we should, we should at least take the laboring oar in terms of responding to the audit and developing the purchasing policy. I just thought they went hand in hand. But I'm, I'm willing and happy to send a draft out to everybody or nobody. It's really, it's really, whatever Mr. Brown tells me to do, I'll be happy to do.
Right, no, I think it's, but Jim, it's up to you.
I, you know, if it was me, the most I'd want to see is to draft that, that red line for Mr. DeWitt.
And just, just by the way, I haven't deleted one word from Mr. Bremer's team. I just added comments on. So if, if you, the, the document I intend to send you is, is, the, the team's document with all the red type is, is what I added to the, the document.
Okay, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yeah, I just, I want to reiterate what, what Mr. DeWitt said. This is not trying to withhold anything from anybody. We're trying to act as a committee. I, I think if everyone wants to see it, please send it out. Let everyone take a look. One thing I would caution, though, is, you know, if in fact, we do decide to engage Mr. Santafani or someone like him, I don't think it's productive, I don't think it's productive use of our committee's time or Mr. Bremer's time to start providing comments on that draft, right? Because de facto, you know, we're hiring someone to help with it. So what I would say is that the, you know, the time to be spent on that, on both the town side and on our side, would be, would be better served waiting. So, great, send it out for informational purposes, but, you know, this is not the draft that we're ultimately going to be providing input on, so just keep that in mind. And, and the other thing I just want to point out, if Chris sends out his red line draft, that's fine. That's not a comprehensive set of comments, because we kind of didn't do that. Joe Santafani had an Excel sheet with a bunch of comments. I had some comments that I, you know, it was a discussion that came together. So it's a little messy, and, you know, it kind of is what it is. So you guys are free to have it, but I just, I would caution that I, you know, it may not be a productive use of everyone's time to focus a lot on this draft and these comments, if in fact, we decide to move forward and, and, you know, get an outside look at this. So that's, you know, everyone can do what they wish, but, you know, that, that would be my thought. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Walsh?
I just want to reiterate that I, I don't think anybody's trying to hide anything at all. I mean, I was just, I would just like to go, I'm familiar with the issues. But Ms. Charlton, if you think that that'd be better served after Mr. Santafani looks at it, or gives you recommendations, then I, then I, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, just, I, I just don't want to have the final meeting, and I'm looking at it for the first time. So if you think that it makes sense for Mr. Santafani to take a look at it, and you guys work with him on coming up with a set of recommendations, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I think what you're commenting on may look very different after that draft survives. So just, I think take a look at this draft, but maybe everyone could just hold on to their thoughts until we get something revised. Just again, to save Tom and his team some grief, and, and just...
Hey, hey, no, I, I wasn't playing, I'm making comment on it. I was more trying to say I'd get familiar with what was out there. But maybe it makes sense to see it in a red line after you've gone through it with Mr. Santafani. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just don't want to see it the, the first time, the night of, you know, whatever.
You're right. So I think just to maybe sum this up is, we have two, we have two, we have two things happening at the same time. We have the purchasing policy, and then we have the audit committee. Mr. Bremer is mixed up in both of them. And so, we'll let the purchasing policy do their thing. We'll get some projections for Mr. Santafani next week, right, and a scope, and we'll, and we'll, we'll turn that back over to the purchasing committee. Before we meet in January, if it's possible, if it takes a February, I guess it takes a February, but hopefully January, no, later than February, the board will have a copy in front of them, long enough to make any comments or questions about this upcoming policy before we meet and before we vote. And then there's the audit committee, headed by Ms. Leclerc, that, and Lori Charlton and I are on that committee. December first, we'll have our first look at what Mr. Bremer's going to present. And at some point, during the month of December, we'll keep going back and forth on that, iron that out, and we'll take a look at that probably in January. But the board will see both drafts before the meeting. We'll try and get it out to you at least a week before, so there's time to go through. The audit, the results of the audit and the purchasing policy. Did that all make sense?
Yep.
That is good. Okay, any further comments, questions on item number six? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item number seven, to hear consider and approve upon the meeting minutes of September one, 2020, and September fifteen, 2020. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Testani, seconded by, by Mr. DeWitt. This is now before us. Any comments, questions?
Are both meeting before?
On September one.
Oh, September one, okay.
September one and September fifteen. So we'll vote on them, we'll vote on them separately. They're both before us. Any questions, thoughts, comments on September one? Okay, seeing none. Are those in favor of approving the minutes of September one?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
September fifteen, 2020. Thoughts, comments on September fifteen? Mr. Walsh, you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just, in reading them, on page three, the second, third paragraph, that there's a comment, or that I made, that said, "Mr. Walsh requested numbers on the increase or decrease in home schooled students and students moving from private school to public school." And we never received that, that, that number. And many members of the public have requested that same number, and are being shut down on that number. And either they're going to have to come before our Board of Education, the people that I'd asked for, I'm trying to think of, our doctor, the new employee that's on the, on the executive staff, I can't remember her name off the top of my head, and also Mr. Cummings. Because I don't know why that is such a mystery. We put a lot of money into the education system, and I think that's a relevant question, and I would like those numbers, and I would like them, and now I want them broken down by month, okay? All the way up until our meeting.
Okay. Okay, so they'll be with us next Tuesday.
Yep.
And we'll follow up.
All right.
We'll follow up before next Tuesday to give them time to put that together.
Sure, that'd be great. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Questions, any other questions in regards to the September fifteenth?
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from September fifteenth, do you say aye?
Aye.
That is, that is unanimous?
No.
From the item, I'm sorry, Ms. Leclerc?
You're muted.
You're on mute. You're still on mute.
Okay.
He can't hear you.
Can't hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Now we're good. Is this about the minutes?
Sorry, I need to, yes, I need to abstain.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. So it's seven yeas, one abstention. Mr. Basin's not here right now. Mr. Basin's not here right now. Okay, thank you. Uh, item number eight, to hear consider and act upon any communications, Mr. Bremer, Mr. Schmidt, do you have any communications for us?
No, I think we're done, none.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Charlton, were you about to say something?
I, I have a question, I don't know if this is the right time to raise it, um, but I, I wanted to ask, uh, if, uh, going forward, it looks like, uh, you know, COVID's not going anywhere and we are going to be in these remote meetings for the foreseeable future. And I, I know that some other boards are trying to accommodate public comment, live public comment during the meeting, and I just, just wondering if that's something, um, that is on our radar screen or i- is it something anybody thinks important, is important? I mean, I, I personally have not gotten many emails, um, I don't know how much public interest there is, but I, it's just something that I think we might want to consider given that we've been in this mode for quite some time and should expect to be for quite some time longer. So maybe just throw that out for consideration or thoughts.
Um, I don't know where Mr. Brown is, but Mr..
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we lost Mr. Brown, so go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
I agree.
He didn't like your comment, Lori.
Yeah, he just appeared. I'm trying to bring this to my agenda, maybe talk about it.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with Charlton's, uh, perspective on this. Um, I'm saddened that we have not been able to go back to, um, being a meeting in public, but I understand why. Uh, and so I would wholeheartedly agree that the public should be able to make comment at meetings. Um, I also understand that the RTM, um, somehow, I don't know, technology, but is allowing, like the way we see each other, the public can see our meetings like this.
Yep.
But I, I was told by somebody that they can't see our meetings like that, like we can't, they, they're not seeing us. And for that to be changed, so the, you know, Mr. Brown, I know you ducked out for a second for probably technology reasons, but, uh, um, Ms. Charlton raised the issue about allowing public comment at our meetings and I was saying that I agreed with her. I also think that, um, the public should be able to see our meetings the way we see our meetings. And the RTM somehow made that request and it is happening. And I don't know whether, how everybody else feels, I'd be welcome to hear everybody else's opinion on it, but, you know, with this going on for so long, they should be able to see our meetings and see, uh, how we interact and see how the town reacts and, as opposed to just hearing it, um, online. Um, so I don't know, I, I'd welcome my other members to speak up on it.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I just.
Okay, I think, I, I think, I think we're all going to agree, right? We're all going to agree? So we all agree, there's different, um, there's different WebEx's from what I understand and there is one that, WebEx 3, I think that accommodates this. So I'll talk to Mr. Kelly about moving this forward and to be able to accept public comment as well be able to see us because yes, you know, I, I was, I was, I guess I was optimistic in that we can get back to meeting in public, in person, um, but that's not going to happen. Not for, not for a while. So we will, uh, I'll look into this. We'll see when we can get that up and running, right? Cause we're all, we're all in agreement? Yes, okay. Mr. Walsh?
Um, I'd also like to, I, I, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Bremer being able to see you guys tonight. And up until tonight, for a while, all I saw was a lecturn and somebody would get up. Cause I just don't know who's in the room and who we have the ability to answer questions to. So to the, I would appreciate if we, the way you guys are on tonight at Town Hall, that we be able to do, you know, this view so that we could see you guys.
But we've got 20 people off camera, so.
I was going to mention that too, Jim. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Jim, I was going to mention it too. This is much better than seeing an empty podium and then somebody comes up, sits down and somebody else goes up, sits down. So I appreciate this and hope, you know, we'll ask that we continue to have our meetings in this way.
I should just add that Bremer started, uh, the First Selectwoman really started the idea of letting people, uh, view this and bring, uh, the public back in. So we're already doing with the RTM and we've started with the Board of Selectmen and we're more than happy to make sure that the, uh, Board of Finance does it as well. And, and my understanding is that these shows are on Fair TV, that you'll be on, if, if you, if you agree, you'll be on, uh, Fair TV as well.
Right, that's, that's, that's great. So I'll, I'll follow up with you this week so we can make this happen for our quarterly on Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Can we do that? Mr. Bremer, we can do that by next Tuesday, you think?
I think so.
All right. Follow up.
Okay. Anything else? On, oh, any communications? Moving on to item number nine, which is to adjourn. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bremer, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, thank you, everybody. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn, Ms. Charlton? Seconded by Mr. Walsh, are those in favor? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody. Good night.